Welcome to the July 7th meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Council members Draymond.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Mayor Quintero.
Here.
The flag salute tonight will be led by Councilmember Najarian and the invocation by City Clerk Rita Buchanan.
Please rise and face the flag. Beat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a guest invocationist and it will be Chaplain Irina Agassian from the Glendale Adventist Medical Center.
Let's pause. Our God with whom our heart and spirit is one, we thank you for today's safety and protection. We are grateful for your bounty in our lives. Refresh us as we convene at this hour for the Glendale city's business so that we may have sound and clear minds. Help us to open our hearts and minds so we may hear and listen to one another. Give us wisdom to make insightful and selfless decisions, always keeping you in our consciousness. Amen.
Amen.
Madam Clerk, may we have your report?
The agenda for the July 7, 2009 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, July 2, 2009, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Okay, what's next?
Next are presentations and appointments. At 3:00 A. is the agenda preview for the meeting of July 14, 2009.
Mr. Starburn.
Yes, agenda preview?
That's me.
Deva McCall.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Next week, July 14th, we'll start with the Housing Authority meeting where we have one item, that'll be a report from the Acting Director of Community Development Housing regarding the Quality of Life Indicators Update Report. There will be redevelopment agency meeting with one business item. This will be a public hearing. The Director of Development Services will be facilitating the discussion on a request for variance to allow a second wall sign for Panera Bread located 300 North Brand Boulevard. On the Glendale City Council agenda, that evening, 6 o'clock, there's a number of items. The first, City Manager's Office will be presenting a report regarding a cosponsorship request for Path Achieve fundraiser event. Next, the Director of Parks Recreation Community Services has a motion and a number of other actions regarding the replacement of the tennis courts at the Adult Recreation Center. Next, the General Manager Glendale Water and Power has a report regarding the authorization to apply for grant funding for recycled water extension project, recycled water extension project for Hoover High School, Toll Middle, and Mark Keppel Elementary Schools. Next, the General Manager again will have a report, and this is regarding an energy risk manager policy. Next, the General Manager GWP with a report regarding the implementation of advanced metering and infrastructure meter data management system, smart meters. Next, the Director of Public Works has a report regarding an update report regarding the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health Place Grant. This is policies for livable, active communities and environments and the coalition with the Los Angeles County Bicycle Coalition, collaboration with the L.A. County Bicycle Coalition. Next, the Director of Public Works will also have a report on the status report of the City of Glendale Safe Streets Initiative, followed by the Director of Planning with a report on the Planning Department Review Procedure for Proposed Residential Window Replacements. The City Attorney then will have a report on the discussion of regulating commercial events which may conflict with business improvement districts and recognized merchants associations. And then lastly, there will be a hearing following all of those reports. From the Director of Administrative Services and Finance, and this is the approval of final engineer's report and ordering the levy and collection of annual assessments for the north San Fernando Road corridor landscape maintenance district for fiscal year 2009 and 2010.
Thank you. Next, please.
At item, item four, City Council and Staff Comments.
Any comments? Mr. Najarian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Mr. McCall stated, there will be an update on the Safe Streets Initiative next meeting, but surely the association that we have with the University of Berkeley and their Traffic Safety Center has been very fruitful. Not only did they come down and hold a community training seminar, but they also worked with our experts, and we just learned last week that since they were so impressed with our community and technical staff participation, they are applying for a grant through the Federal Highway Traffic Safety Administration, and we have a very good chance of receiving up to $400,000 for traffic safety education and enforcement if that grant gets funded. Mayor Quintero signed the letter of support last week, and it was sent off FedEx up to Berkeley where it was being forwarded with their package to Washington, D.C. And the good news just keeps rolling with our relationship with Berkeley. So, thank you for everyone, staff, community that participated, as well as the council for supporting that, and hopefully we'll be getting some significant funds to continue our efforts at traffic and pedestrian safety.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Draymond.
Yes. Well, first of all, I'd like to extend my congratulations to merchants at Kenneth Village and the community up in northwest Glendale for the opening of their Kenneth Village Farmers Market on Friday. Appears to have been a success. I hope that continues, and I hope that whatever the obstacles are, they'll be worked out so that that event can continue and we can continue to build on the sense of community there in northwest Glendale and help to promote the Kenneth Village merchants. Also, Mr. Mayor, we had two terrific events up in the Chrysena Valley area over the weekend. On Saturday, the Chrysena Valley Fireworks Program at La Chrysena Elementary School. The city is one of the sponsors of the event, and it was a terrific event, very well attended. The fireworks program they do helps to, it's not only a great fireworks show, but it also helps to keep people from using fireworks on the streets and in the neighborhoods in La Chrysena, both the incorporated portion and the unincorporated portion. Also, in the same area, on Sunday, on the 5th, was the 8th Annual July Block Party Classic Car and Hot Rod Show in the Montrose Shopping Park. There were over 200 vehicles participating, exhibitors participating in the event. It was a four-block event with the Sunday Harvest Market, the whole section of hot rods, and then a separate section of classic stock vehicles. Just a terrific afternoon and a terrific 4th of July weekend in the city. The last item, Mr. Mayor, is our Glendale History Challenge. We're back with a photograph. Can we see that? There it is. Take a look. If you know this location or approximately when that photograph was taken, please call in or email Chuck Wyke with our libraries at Cwyke, W-I-K-E, at C-I dot Glendale dot C-A dot U-S, or you can call him at area code 818-548-2042. Here's how the game works. We show a historic photograph from Glendale's past, and you either call in or email in the location and approximate date. There's the photograph again. The photograph was taken, and if you're the winner, you win a $25 gift certificate to one of our restaurants in Glendale. This time, the gift certificate is for Farniente, and the trick is you have to wait till the end of the council meeting in order to contact the city. Take one last look at the photograph, and then good luck to our contestants. There you go. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I did have the opportunity to go up to Montrose for the car show, and it was very, very impressive, coupled with the farmers market. It was a very, very busy Sunday morning and afternoon, 18,000. So, very well, very well attended. I want to compliment the Montrose Merchants Association and all of the individual owners of the cars. And to actually remind people, is it July 18th, Cruise Night?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, so July 18th Cruise Night, Saturday night, we'll close Brand Boulevard and have hundreds of hot rods, classic cars, you name it. It's quite an event. Okay, anything else, staff? Next, please.
At item five, our consent items, 5A through E, they're following our routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
Mr. Draymond.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't have any cards, I will move the consent calendar. Second.
Okay, and I do have a question and a comment for the Director of Public Works. As you know, we have been talking about, even earlier in the day, I've been talking about the idea of trying to focus on local companies for some of our construction bids, and so I hope when we go out to bid on future projects that will be taken into consideration. And in fact, if we have to put it on the agenda to go about changing our bidding process, then I'm all for that, and I would like to sort of focus on that. It doesn't do a whole lot of good in terms of stimulus packages if the people doing the work are from other parts of Southern California. So, my only comment. Any comments? Mr. Najarian.
Mr. Mayor, I need to, although I seconded the consent calendar, I need to indicate an abstention on item 5E, or not even an abstention, a recusal on 5E. We get a lot of, there's a lot of action on this buyer station, I tell you. I'm recusing myself so often. I do have an interest in real property adjacent to this, so it would be a conflict of interest to partake in any decision regarding 5E. So, I'll move 5A through D.
All right. We can do that.
Or can we do that, or just?
Yeah, you can do that because it's a separate item.
So, you want a second?
Or what we can do is we can have somebody, 5E can be pulled.
Yeah.
And vote on the consent calendar, and then take 5E separately.
All right, so we'll have a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Draymond.
I'll move the consent calendar at 5A, B, C, and D.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmembers Draymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver. Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Mr. Draymond.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the, I'll move consent item 5E.
Section.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Draymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian. Mayor Quintero. I'm sorry. Weaver and Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next, please.
Item six, oral communications. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The City Manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Okay, this is the announcement portion of oral communications. You'll have up to three minutes to let the public know. We'll start with Jeanette Sturdavin, followed by Colin Bogart.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero and councilmembers. I'm here tonight to bring your attention to the fact that we have Sparrows at the Alex Theater. Now, I don't want to alarm you, Mr. Draymond, but Glendale Arts has partnered with the Alex Film Society, the Library of Congress, and the National History Museum to bring Sparrows starring Mary Pickford to the Alex Theater. This is a once-in-Los Angeles showing. It will only be here, it will only be at the Alex on one day. It will be here this Sunday at 2:00 on July 13th. Is that July 12th?
12th.
12th. At 2:00. But the thing that I wanted to bring to your attention, and I also wanted to bring home to our viewers at home, is the fact that this is a silent film. It was done in 1926. Since the Alex opened its doors in 1925, we're thinking that it probably even showed at the Alex during its heyday as being a vaudeville theater. This presentation and this classically restored film is also going to be accompanied by a live organist, and this is something that many adults have not experienced, but I'm sure many children have never experienced. So, I'm hoping that people will bring their children, grandchildren, maybe even great-grandchildren to experience this once-in-Los Angeles event. So, I hope you'll all come out this Sunday afternoon and enjoy the Sparrows at the Glendale Arts. Thank you.
Thank you. Colin Bogart, followed by Paula Devine.
Mayor Quintero, councilmembers, city staff, good evening. My name is Colin Bogart. I work with the L.A. County Bicycle Coalition on the Place Grant Safe and Healthy Streets Project, and I do hear that I am on the agenda for next week to give you an update. I promise I'm working to keep that presentation complete but concise. Tonight, I'm here to tell you about an event that we've got coming up this Saturday, July 11th, and I have a slide that I'd like to show you. As you may recall, we did the Glendale History Ride a couple of months ago, and we've decided that we need to do something for the pedestrians. We want to remind everybody that there is a pedestrian element to the Safe and Healthy Streets Project in addition to the bicycle portion. So, we're doing a Glendale History Walk in partnership with the Glendale Historical Society and the Parks Recreation and Community Services Department. Again, it's this Saturday, July 11th. We'll be meeting at 9:30 a.m. at Chess Park across the street from the Alex Theater. I want to also mention that we just got the okay we're going to be able to offer free parking for history walk participants. We will be validating parking, although I should also mention that it's a lot of fun to ride your bike to the event, and there are bike racks in the Orange Street parking structure as well as various locations on Brand Boulevard, and we are encouraging people to park in the Orange Street parking structure, which is right adjacent to Chess Park. The route is expected to take about two hours. It's roughly two and a half miles long, and if people want more information, they can go to www.la-bike.org/Glendale, or they can call 818-334-9731. And I'd like to invite all of you to attend.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Paula Devine, followed by Leon Mayer.
Mayor Quintero, city council members, staff. My name is Paula Devine, and I'm here on behalf of the Commission on the Status of Women. I have two announcements this evening. First of all, our Camp Rosie opened its doors yesterday to 24 girls. This is our Business and Leadership Skills Development Class, which we hold at Pacific Community Center every summer for the last three years. I'm here to announce that there is space available in our August classes. This is a three-week seminar. It is free. The August classes are from the 3rd until the 21st. They will be held from Monday through Thursday from 10 until 5:00 p.m. The three-week day camp includes instructions in financial literacy, in healthy relationships, safe dating, self-defense, financial literacy, I think I said that, life skills, and self-awareness, fitness, nutrition, and much, much more. So, if you know a young woman between the ages, or young girl between the ages of 13 and 19 who you think could benefit from these classes, please go online to our website for an application. It is at www.CI.Glendale.CA.us/women. The classes are free. You can do, or you can call Christine Baboomian at 818-548-4844. And because the classes are all day, we also include lunch. So, it's a, it's quite a fine class, three weeks for young girls. My second announcement is this. This year, the Commission's focus has been on women's health, and on the second Monday of each month at 6:30, when we meet on GTV6 televised, we present a local doctor or health professional speaking on a health issue which concerns women. This Monday, the focus will be on scleroderma. This is a rare autoimmune disease, and Dr. Katrina Miller from Glendale Adventist Medical Center will be there to speak about it. Romel McCarion will also speak on the new program that the, and I want to get this right, the Armenian-American Medical Association Ladies Auxiliary is providing. It is called Glendale Healthy Women, and it's a very interesting program, brand new, and I think all women should learn about it. So, if you'll watch us on Monday at 6:30 on GTV6, and if you don't have anything else to do and you want to catch up on what we've been doing in the last few months, which includes stroke and heart disease, cervical cancer, and other health issues, you can go to the GTV6 video archives and look us up. So, hope that you'll stay tuned or watch us at 6:30 p.m. on Monday. Thank you.
Thank you. Leon Mayer, followed by Barry Allen.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, members of the council, staff. My name is Leon Mayer. I'm here on behalf of the Glendale Library and the Friends of the Library, and this Thursday, that's the 9th, 7:00 at the Central Library, we will have Kay Meradian. That's Dr. Kay Meradian. She lives not too far from Glendale. She was born in Boston, educated at Boston University, UCLA, and Southeastern University. She taught for 25 years in executive positions with the LA Tech College, Community College in LA. She really has a fantastic personal background. But the last 10, approximate 10 years of her life, she has spent researching the deportation genocide route that occurred during the genocide of 1915, when her mother escaped from Armenia. And she, in doing this, she has taken several trips to Turkey and Syria and taken pictures. She's also studied at UCLA, their archives. She's consulted reports from the reporters at the time, the missionaries, the diplomats. And this will be a fantastic lecture, but the lecture is about her book, A Place in the Sun, a gift from the sun, rather, a gift from the sun. She'll be talking about her book, she'll be signing, she'll have a PowerPoint presentation. This should be a very interesting evening. We urge you all to attend. I'm not going to, just to take up the rest of my time, tell you about our August and September programs, but we do have a couple of great September and August programs, and I'll talk to you about them later. Any questions? It's free, and parking is validated if you park at the Maryland Exchange. If you don't park there, you're in trouble. Expect to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Barry Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council staff, and of course, the public. I'm Barry Allen. I just want to remind you that we're having our business breakfast, our city business breakfast, on Friday at Foxy's. There are two topics that we have. One is the performance bonuses to 309 city employees and the amount of money that that's cost the city. The other thing we're going to be talking about, time permitting, is Mayor Quintero and his statement of economic interest, where he indicated that he had closed his business yet took substantial money from the city afterwards. We also have the financial reports from the city on the mayor, from his former business. So, time permitting, we'll be covering those, those aspects of Glendale, City of Glendale business, and once again, information is available on vangardians.org, and it's the $20, and we throw in a free breakfast. Thank you.
Thank you. And that business was closed, I believe, five-plus years ago, but we still haven't heard from Mr. Allen on his Vanguardians checks and income, et cetera, et cetera. We're still waiting to hear that from you. Maybe you can bring that up on Friday, Mr. Allen. Okay, next.
Item 8A, Director of Public Works regarding proposed continuous barrier centromedian on Glenwood Road between Virginia Avenue, Avenue North and Concord Street. At 8A1 is a motion directing the Director of Public Works to proceed with the construction.
All right. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on item 8A? Anyone else would like to speak on item 8A? Okay, Mr. Starburn.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm going to go to Steve Zern for the staff report. I want to make some preparatory comments before I do that. It was last October that the tragedy occurred, and a young girl lost her life in an automobile and pedestrian accident at the Hoover Keppel Toll School facility. It's a rather unique environment there, where we have an elementary school, middle school, and high school, all in one block area. City Council is very familiar with incidents over the years, and the amount of attention we've given to that entire area in order to improve student pedestrian vehicular safety. I had the opportunity to facilitate two separate community meetings following the tragic accident, and I think all total probably involved well over 200 residents, teachers, administrators, PTA opinion makers, and others in those conversations about any means that we might be able to utilize to improve the safety in that area, and hopefully, once again, try and avoid the kind of tragedy that occurred in October. One of the ground rules that we had for those meetings was that no ideas would go unevaluated. Anything was fair game. If somebody had an idea that hadn't been touched on before, we would take time and look at those and discuss those. The second ground rule and objective for those meetings was that we would try to take every reasonable step to implement measures to improve safety in the area, if indeed there was more that we should and could be doing. As a result, you received a report following that with a number of steps and measures, one of which is the proposed median on Glenwood Road. And we're before you this evening to discuss the specifications for that, and in particular, the recommendation from staff that Steve will get into and Mr. Bagdanyan on what is the view of both your staff here with the city and the traffic engineers, as well as school district staff, administrators, and principals, and PTA leaders of the schools to close the meeting. A question that was really left unresolved the last time you heard the matter because we wanted to have a period of time with candlesticks in place to experiment with the median being open. But with that, let me turn to Steve Zern, Director of Public Works, for the staff report. Steve?
Experimenting with the council, that just about covered everything I had to say. With that, as Mr. Starburn indicated, there were a number of safety measures presented to you and the board in a joint meeting. We're coming back specifically to talk about one of the major installations, which was the median, and a lot of work that, as Mr. Starburn indicated, has been done between the district and the city, including our public safety operations in fire and police, public works in engineering and traffic. So, with that, I'm going to let Mr. Bagdanyan, our Traffic and Transportation Administrator, go over the details and what the proposal is.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I just want to have a couple of slides that I would show, just the area of the Glenwood Road that after, if you go to the next slide, This is the area of the schools, and throughout the last 10 years, we've been doing many improvements, including changing the direction of the streets in the area, like Virginia Concord, we made them into a one-way street operation. We've installed stop signs, we put in parking restriction, loading zone restrictions, pedestrian drop-off pickup area restrictions, so that we can do whatever we can to improve the area. In November, we did, in addition to some of the previous improvements that we did, we converted this to always stop at Virginia and South Street. We added crossing guards at South and We added crossing guards at South and Concord Street. These are all based on requests that we received from the parents, teachers, and the school and the residents in the area. The most, the primary one was, what we did is we made this into a full-way stop, because prior, previous to that, we had, in the next slide that you will see, previous to that, we just had embedded lighting that would flash to warn the mid-block crosswalk. We actually converted that into a complete stop, and we installed flashers in addition to a crossing guard at that location. In the next slide, where Mr. Starbird discussed, was the construction of a raised median. The whole idea was, we are Glenwood Road between Hoover Toll, Keppel. It's a, it's a, almost like a campus street. It's like a high school where you enter a college or a campus, and usually you have a raised median with landscaping, and you have pedestrians, students crossing it. And the whole idea was to limit the jaywalking that is occurring, and basically force all the students to cross at the stop-controlled intersections with crossing guards or at the mid-block location. So we came up with the idea of the raised median, which is shown in the next slide, and this is the raised median. At the time, given the issue of access to the Hoover High School driveway, which provides access all the way to the back of their campus, and concerning about some of the residential driveways, what we presented to the city council was a raised median, which we had a break of about 120 feet in this area. Plus, we had driveways to the parking lot in front of Toll and Keppel, which is in this area. So we kept that open as part of that concept. We did get input from the city council members that they were concerned about, okay, if you close off this area with a raised median, and it has a railing, 36-inch railing on it, you're still going to provide an opportunity for students or parents, unfortunately, that would still cross in this area that is open. Plus, you will have U-turns at these locations where currently we have U-turns. And what we did, we went ahead in order to, again, do the best we can in a, in a short-term basis, we put in delineators on Glenwood Road. And in the next picture, you'll see that these delineators were immediately installed. Obviously, it's not going to prevent pedestrians, because they can cross in between them, and that was occurring. Even though we put in delineators, even though we have the crossing guards in place at the mid-block location at the intersection, we still have, unfortunately, parents or kids that are crossing here. Also, we observed the location for the past eight months that these delineators have been in place, that you have U-turns that are, people are doing, unfortunately, again, in between the, so it's, it's like this. Not only we've observed them, but we've had people who are not only doing U-turns, they do three-pointers, or they can go into the driveways and turn around. Obviously, if there's a police officer, that they get cited, but as you know, we can't have a police officer there all the time. So the idea was, if we're going to close Glenwood, you know, in terms of the rest of the Glenwood has a raised median with a railing, 36-inch railing on top, essentially, when we leave that opening there, God forbid, we have another pedestrian accident, and we're going to come back and say, why didn't we close that? Obviously, if we can go back to the previous slide, to the slide that shows the median, this causes some impacts, both to the school district operations, as well as the two residential houses that are on the north side of Glenwood. During this period also, once we put in the temporary delineators, we received complaints from the two residents that say, you're, you know, impacting our access. We no longer can make left turns in, into our driveway. So we removed that portion. In addition, the school district was doing construction on site, so they had construction trucks that would have to go in and out. We removed that for that purpose as well. We kept this, essentially, in our opinion, as a test case, to see what will happen, which we saw what we anticipated was happening. So our recommendation to city council is, we make this a solid median, and we close this area. This does, is going to impact the school district driveway. We have worked with the school district in order to widen their driveway here, so as they have trucks coming in, in the westbound direction, we are going to widen this area of their driveway so that they can turn in and out completely. We're going to move one parking space on street. They'll have five parking spaces in this area. One of those spaces will be removed, so that we can improve the turning radius for that driveway as well. Although it has impact to their operations, they, they believe with us that this is the best safety measure we should be taking, in, in order to address the pedestrian and vehicular conflict that could happen if we, we keep the, the median open at this location. That also limits the access to their parking lot, which is on the south side, which can only now be accessed from Virginia or Highland as they're coming eastbound on Glenwood Road. Our recommendation to city council is, we go ahead with the approval of, of the center median with a raised railing on top, and for, it's a solid median with no opening. It's important to also note that we have worked with the fire department, given the fact that they still, in case of a major fire or an emergency, they would have to access their driveway. This will be, this portion of the median for a distance of about 40 feet, it will be a removable median, in other, in removable railing. It will be on a, on a rail, so that there will be no raised median in this portion for 40 feet. You will have the railing on the pavement. It can be, they can slide it in case of an emergency. It will, has a fire department lock on it, so in case there's an emergency, that the roadway is closed during the morning or in the afternoon, where you got a lot of parents and everybody, and they cannot access this area coming from Pacific, and they have to access the opposite direction. They can slide that gate, they can address the emergency, if it's a fire truck, or if it's a emergency ambulance, and if it has to, any ambulance has to respond to the residences on the north side, they can do the same if their, their traffic is blocked, if they're coming in a westerly direction, if their traffic is blocked. In addition to this, the residents on the north side have, I know, sent us letters of concerns about a number of issues. Mr. Mayor, if I may, I can address them as they come up, because I can, I have some solutions or recommendations for that, but our recommendation to council in the motion is for council to authorize us to proceed with the construction of the median.
Mr. Starbird?
Mr. Mayor, a couple of supplemental comments. The evaluation of this recommendation was done in conjunction with the school district, both the administrative staff, as well as the onsite principals. The district has representatives here this evening, principals, administrators, and I believe, some presidents of the PTAs. But I will say that the evaluation of the need to close this wasn't an easy decision. We recognize the issues that arise. The district is inconvenienced, as Mr. Bagdanyan mentioned, because of their, their driveway, and we could anticipate the objections of the residents, but frankly, in that evaluation, we concluded that this was a step we really needed to take in order to provide the highest level of safety that we reasonably could. I will note that the widening of the driveway for the high school, we've assisted with some engineering and would be using our contractor to actually do the work, and the district is paying for all of that cost. We're happy to answer any questions.
Questions, staff? Nope. All right. We'll go to the public. Start with Sivad Akopian, followed by Sarush Akopian.
How much time do I have? Three minutes?
I have three minutes.
I think the website said that I have five minutes.
No, that's for oral communications. If you go over your three minutes, I'll let you speak.
Okay. I'm hearing that...
And we need your name for the record.
Okay, my name is Sivad Akopian. I live 717 Glenwood Road last 10 years. And this letter that we got really caught us in surprise. I mean, in January, when you put the temporary candlesticks, I sent an email, and then Joan, Joan Drayman at the time, replied to my email that says it was an error to close the driveways. So then he was, it was directed to remove those candlesticks immediately, so the driveway was open, so we did not pursue this issue any further. We see several issues with this proposed procedure. Number one, if you're talking about the safety, let's think about the major evacuation cases, where it's not, it's not a coincidence that Glenwood is narrow everywhere, and when you get to the school area, it's suddenly wide 45-feet street. The engineers who designed these three schools together, they thought about it, and they created these streets so wide, so that when you have major fire and earthquake emergency, the fire trucks can come and help the kids. And, and we're not talking about one fire truck, we're talking about number of fire trucks. If you build a median, you are only left one side, 20-feet one-way street. We looked up, my brother looked up some codes from the, from the law school website. He knows about it. He'll talk about it. And we researched some codes that fire truck needs 12-feet line to operate. 12-feet line is for general testing, to be able, for the fire truck to be able to stop, which means it needs more space to operate normally. So if you take that requirement, and then you have other vehicle code requirements, which says, and widest California vehicle can be one or two inches, and then that vehicle is allowed to park 18 inches away from the curb. That itself is a 10-feet distance. You add 12 feet to 10 feet, that's 22. If you build a median, you only have 20 feet there. There is not enough room by these codes that you, you do that median, and, and you'll stay within the firefighter regulation. You're talking about the accidents, October accident that happened on the crosswalk, and you, you're talking about that this solution is addressing that problem? It's not addressing that problem. January 12th, on the Wilson Middle School, there was a similar accident. You have a median built there, there is whatever speed limitations that they control over there. There was an accident there, on the crosswalk, and it was truck struck the kid, 12-year-old kid. And, and now you're letting the, all the school trucks to pass the, instead of, instead of coming from the west, they have to come from the east, very narrow area, pass through the Glenwood Schools, Middle and High School, pass through the crosswalk, and then come and go into the, into the school alley. Is, is this reasonable? Are you talking about the safety here? When I'm bringing you a fact of the accident where the truck could not stop on time and hit the little girl, right in front of the school, right on the crosswalk? I don't see this change any, resolving any safety issue. The report is talking about illegal U-turns after school hours. Who cares about after-school hours? They are doing illegal U-turns on Glenox Boulevard after-school hours. Do you want to control that? If you want to control that, you need to put cameras there, that every illegal U-turn can be caught and you are, issued a ticket. The report is speaking about listing all the, other, we talked about, we, we, actually, it says, we contacted all the stakeholders. Who are the all the stakeholders, when the residents were not involved in these discussions? And you keep saying that residents were, in which residents? We are the two residents that are, this is affecting our life. The report is violating the Americans with Disabilities Act. If, if I park on the other side of the street, I cannot get to my house. Have you thought about that? And when the, I send you this letter, and I sent all these legal issues to city attorney office, but we didn't get any reply from them. All these legal issues need to be addressed before this proposal put to the voting. You cannot vote something that has so many errors in it.
Okay, wrap it up, please.
And another que, final, final thing that I want to ask, the details that, all this code compliance and legal issues that we sent to the city attorney office, why we didn't get any reply for that? Who's going to explain whether I, we are right or you are right? Do we need third party? Do we need judge or somebody from Sacramento to explain to us which one is right? Why we didn't get any reply?
Okay, thank you. You have a question, Ms. Freeman?
I have a question. First, I'll just say that I'm, I'm sorry that this is upsetting and an inconvenience for you. I feel for you. I have a question about the parking situation for you. Do you not, do you have a driveway or a garage?
I have a driveway, I have a garage, yes.
Okay, so you don't typically, because you did catch my attention when you said if you park across the street, you would have a problem.
But we do have a, we do have a handicap van that parks in front of the street for my brother, and sometimes for me, and because of the parking situation, we are not lucky to get that parking all the time. So sometimes we have to park on the other side of the street.
The van doesn't fit into the driveway?
No. Even if it does, you need a, you need a flat area, so you can put the ramp, so you can come out from the, from the van with the wheelchair.
Is this spot in front of your house a designated handicap spot?
No. And we don't want that, because half of the Glendale, illegal or legal, has the blue, and they can, can come and stop there. Let's leave it like that. I don't want it to paint, be painted blue. No. So all these issues, I'm, I'm just surprised that this report has so many errors, and when we point these things out to you, you're so quiet. You, you, nobody answered to us. So who's gonna, who's gonna...
Try to get an answer tonight. Mr. Raymond?
Yes, I just wanted to respond to the speaker. I do remember your email quite well, and the email was concerning when the candlesticks in the road first went up. And your question was, why were they coming so far down the street? And I referred the email to Mr. Zern and the city manager to get an answer for you. And the answer was that in that particular area, it, it was an error at that time. Since that time, as you could see in the photographs that Mr. Bagdanyan was showing, you were seeing people using that area. As a matter of fact, you saw a photograph just then of what looked like a parent walking their child, jaywalking across Glenwood, which is not a very smart thing to do, I'd have to say. Kind of stunning, actually, to see that photograph. But in any case, I never said to you that it is an error to use candlesticks. I just wanted to clarify that. The use of the candlesticks in the area you were asking about, at that time, they were not supposed to go up in that spot. That's all I wanted to clarify, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Sarush Akopian, followed by Seda Akopian.
Mm-hmm. Ready?
Okay. One of the issues that I...
Your name, please.
My name is Sarush Akopian, and good evening. I have a, I have a few questions that I wanted to address, this is the council. One of the issues is that this proposal by itself, violating the American Disability Act. I don't know about the city attorney's office, do they know about it or not, but I called traffic department many times, and I complained about the parking there, and said that I'm on a wheelchair and I need a parking, but nobody did any reply to me or do anything for me useful. Another issue is the wideness of the street. That's a violation of Code of Regulation, which is similar as safety code. You cannot violate regulation codes and under the pretext of safety. And Mr. Bagdanyan claims that Glenwood is a campus street. It's not a campus street. It's a city street. It is, and that street is wide enough for fire trucks to get from east side to west. And in fact, after the Glenox, that street is the next one. And another thing that you are in violation is the school buses. You, I don't know if you, if you ever look at the school bus manual. You have to look at these things. They, they don't, I mean, if you look at the school bus manual, you have a 10-feet space in order to stop in, on the, and drop the children. And they're talking about safety. They have a big 12-feet, I believe it's a 12-feet-high gate next to our house in the alley. And that, that gate, students jump over it all the time. They claim on my metal fence, they claim on it and jump over the gate. I used to have a dog, and I have, get rid of the dog because of them. Nobody pays attention to these things. And last thing I heard, that they wanted to take my parkings away in order to make the school alley wider, that fire trucks or food trucks can get in. the school alley wider that fire trucks or food trucks can get in. That's really intolerable. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Seda Okopian, followed by Saro Okopian. Seda first, and then Saro.
Seda probably would not have anything to say. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Saro Okopian. I also live on 717 Glenwood Road. We are taking this matter very seriously and will pursue this as long as we can. First, the question is, when we had these meetings, why nobody told us anything about that? I mean, we are the first residents in the area that get affected with this change and we were unaware of all these meetings that you were mentioning. I'm very concerned about the speeds, safety. We are talking about safety and we are creating ideal situation for young people to drive their cars at enormous speeds in those narrow streets. I don't know if you've been there at like 10 o'clock, 9 o'clock, did you do any observation then? There is, there are cars that going like 40, 50 miles an hour. This median will create an ideal situation for these cars to go even faster. So please pay attention to that. I think, based on all these discussions, I think this project is not ready to be started or to be voted on. We need to talk about this in more detail and see. We're not only concerned about our house, about our convenience, we're also concerned about the safety as you all are. Because we live in there, safety concerns us first than anybody else. And the last thing I want to mention, that we are creating a situation for us, for my family, that we will be forced to evacuate, we will be forced to get out of that house and find another house. And I want to tell you that we already spent a lot of money to make that property being like wheelchair accessible. So if we get another house and we start fixing that to be wheelchair accessible, who's going to pay for that? Because we already did it once. So think about that also. The main thing that I wanted to mention today, this evening here, is the high speed, the safety speed. Put somebody there at night, let them tell you how fast the cars are going there. How many kids, young kids, drive these new BMWs, new Acuras? You should see and you should take action for that. That not just, you wouldn't see this in Glenox or any other street because under Glenwood, they do it. And yeah, it's for you to observe and to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, these residents have asked a number of questions, so before we continue with oral communications, let's see if we can answer some of them, starting with the comment about the width of the street and firefighters and how they can operate.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, the issue of they've raised, the, first of all, fire trucks are less than 10 feet wide. So the largest truck that we have is less than 10 feet wide. So if you take the fire truck, which is 10-foot wide, then they claim that in their letters that the 102 inches that is needed for the widest vehicle, in other words, if you have a truck trailer with a wide load on it, that's what is in the vehicle code, that you have 102 inches wide. And let's say if there's a truck parked with a load plus their 18 inches from the curb, that's 120 inches, that's about, that's 12 feet. I'm sorry, that's 10 feet. Plus, the width of the truck, it's another 10, that's 20 feet maximum. And if you had the worst-case scenario, that have a wide load, large vehicle parked from the curb, 18 inches from the curb, and you have a fire truck that is coming on Glenwood and you have the median there, you still have about 6 inches that you can go through that area. Yeah, that is, if the worst thing can happen, that those two happen at the same time. In general, during the morning and the afternoon hours is where the peak time is, where we have the school pickup and the drop-off activities. The rest of the time, Glenwood Avenue, at least in the westbound direction from Concord to Virginia, we have essentially no parking, with the exception of five spaces that are in front of the residential areas. We have one space reserved for the police vehicles, that is on and off there in case they're there for enforcement purposes. And we have one school drop-off area for the school buses when they bring in some of the disabled kids, that they drop them off in the morning or during the day and then pick them up in the afternoon. So basically, that area, that whole area is 20 feet, 20.5 feet wide. It's clear most of the time. Yes, during the school activities, there might be parents that are picking up, dropping off in the red zone that they're not supposed to. And that could be the worst-case scenario where you have a fire truck if it's coming through an emergency situation. If that area is blocked and we have the median break where we said, we've designed the railing just in case that they have to access that area. In addition to that, if you look at citywide, our streets are between 28 feet, the narrow streets that we have, especially in the Adams Hills area. We have parking on one side or both sides of the street and our fire trucks getting to, it's not an ideal condition. Fire department will tell you that, you know, they would like to have it 20 feet clear so in case that they have two fire trucks going side by side, they're able to do that. So in most cases, the majority of cases, you will have that width available on Glenwood Street with the raised median, the four-foot raised median in there. We've clearly checked out with fire department. Again, as I said, they're not 100%, you know, it's not an ideal condition. They would like to have a clear shot at it. But in most cases, at least on Glenwood, we should have that situation in place. That was one of the questions.
Mr. Garcia?
Just before we got to the next point, I just wanted to add one other thing because the speaker, Mr. Okopian, did reference a provision of state law which requires a 12-foot lane for testing purposes for fire trucks. And that is a separate section of the administrative code, which just requires a 12-foot lane for the purpose of your testing a fire truck with, that has certain braking equipment. It doesn't require a separate 12-foot lane in addition to the 18 inches and the 102 maximum fire truck width. So the city's not required to provide the 22 feet under state law. It's just required to provide what the fire code requires and also what the fire department has accepted as, or deemed to be acceptable.
In other words, that regulation does not apply to us when we're doing street.
All right, that's some of the issues on the service. Let me ask you a question. Could these homes, could we do a preferential parking?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as I said, there are some solutions to their concern. Obviously, they have a concern about parking on street in front of their homes. Currently, we have a one-hour parking in front in that stretch of Glenwood on their north side, just west of, just east of Virginia. We can take one of those spaces, issue them a permit for their use only. In other words, it could be, they can receive a permit that says one hour, we can sign it, says one hour except by permit. So they, the two residential houses there, they will be able to get those permits and they can park their vehicle and they're not subject to that one-hour limitation. In addition, even if we didn't do that, if they have a handicap placard that they can hang from their window, that exempts them from that one-hour restriction. So they don't, we don't have to give them a permit. But if they want to, we can provide them with that permit. Earlier, the speaker mentioned about handicap space, although we prefer not to stripe disabled parking on street in basically apparel spaces, there are some exceptions. We've done that and we'd be willing to accommodate that as well. But that would be available for anybody who has a handicap placard and they can park it. So they have those choices that we can accommodate.
Ms. Friedman?
So question for Mr. Garcia. There was, the idea floated that we would somehow be running afoul of ADA rules. Does the ADA require that we guarantee residents parking on residential streets even when they have their own driveways?
Councilmember Friedman, it does not. All it requires is that they have equal access to the sidewalks, the curbs, and the, and crosswalks. And that's what's being provided in this case, so.
I'm assuming the ADA doesn't say that even, that you have to, you can't have a median, even if they could use the curb?
It wouldn't require that, no, it not.
So, and in fact, if they were to be crossing from the other side of the street, through the street, they'd be jaywalking.
If that area was marked as a, with no jaywalking signs.
Thank you.
Now, the next question I have is the notice of meetings. Were the residents there noticed? Were they aware of the different meetings that were being held or how did that work?
Mr. Mayor, we did not specifically notice every resident in that area about the meetings that have taken place in that area. It was in cooperation with the school district that majority of the residents in that area that were aware of that, we, through the school district and the interested party who showed an interest specifically about that area where those community meetings that were held at the school district is where those residents that were interested that showed up. Approximately June 25th, we sent a letter to these two residents and informed them about our recommendation that we will be making to city council and specifically outlined the reasons as to why we want to put in the solid median, in other words, not to have that median break in there. Informed them about the city council meeting so that they have an opportunity, as it impacts them directly, to come to the meeting and express their concerns, which they have sent us letters. And the issues that they've raised, we prepared to address them specifically as it relates to their parking and concerns about the ADA requirements. And we have addressed them, working with the city attorney's office.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I might add, as we noted, the first approach was anticipating a break in the median. This meeting was for the purpose of discussing the need to have that median as we proceed with specs to construct it now filled in and solid. And of course, that's why they're here, because we alerted them that contrary to the way we had placed the candles originally, the view was now that median should be closed. Be nice if we could keep it open, but the reality is we think it causes a greater hazard than the inconvenience from closing it. And on that basis, we let them know well in advance that we'd be bringing that recommendation in and they could have their day in court here with the city council.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, we'll keep going with public comment. Richard Sheehan, followed by Kevin Welsh.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, members of the city council and staff. My name is Richard Sheehan. I'm the assistant superintendent for Glendale Unified School District. And I'm here on behalf of Dr. Michael Escalante, the superintendent who's unable to attend. We, as a district, are in complete support of the city installing a median down the center of Glenwood Road between Virginia and Concord. That would be closed with the exception for the opening of the crosswalk between Hoover and Toll. The city and the district have worked collaboratively since the fateful day of October 29th, 2008, to ensure that students, parents, and community members are safe, including safety upgrades throughout the area, including the new stop sign, the extension of the sidewalks. Now that time has passed since the accident, I want to remind everyone that the sole purpose of the median is the overall safety of students around the tri-school area. The city and staff, the city staff and district personnel have worked thoroughly to make sure that all aspects of safety have been addressed to prevent another tragedy. The median plays a vital role in the greater safety plan for Glenwood Road, slowing down traffic and preventing illegal U-turns. Thank you for allowing me to address the issue.
Thank you.
Pardon me. Before Mr. Sheehan sits down, you have cards from a number of individuals representing the schools and the PTA groups. I think they can speak or they might be available for questions, but you might, I think you have their cards. If you have other speakers in the public, not including school folks, some of the school folks may wish to speak or they may be just available to answer any questions if you have them.
We have the three principals from Hoover, Toll, and Keppel, as well as representatives from each of their PTAs.
Okay, well, I'll read their names into the record and if they would like to speak, they can step forward. Kevin Welsh, Silmarra Maltini, Mary Mason, and Kathy Kuzo, also Kim Frederick, Paula Nelson, and Vic Podrosian. Would you like to speak? Okay, any of the names that were read, if you'd like to speak, you can. If not, we'll move forward.
Mayor Quintero, members of city council, city staff, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Kevin Welsh. I'm the principal of Hoover High School in the Glendale School District. I've served as an administrator at Hoover High School since 1982. That's 27 years. That's nearly three decades of experience in dealing with the issues of safety on Glenwood Road. I believe arguably that that amount of time and experience qualifies me to have a firsthand perspective on this very important and sensitive community and school issue. I strongly affirm the addition of the proposed median that would extend east and westbound on Glenwood Road from Concord Street to Virginia Avenue. This would serve as an incredibly effective measure to enhance student and pedestrian safety on Glenwood Road. This extended and continuous and unopened median along Glenwood Road would also have this railing fence atop to serve as a further deterrent to any pedestrians or students jaywalking, running, or walking carelessly across the street. For many years, I have witnessed personally careless vehicles cross the center lane to pass a double-park car or a slow-moving vehicle. This four-foot-wide center median would thus prohibit mid-block U-turns and prevent cars from crossing the center line to pass another car. The fence on top of the median would also deter again jaywalkers between Concord and Virginia and would clearly serve as a highly visible and physical impediment to discourage careless pedestrians. In addition, the median and fence would greatly accent the notion for all pedestrians, vehicles, students, parents, employees, and residents, that this part of Glenwood Road is a most special and safe zone. This median plus the railing would also serve as an excellent teaching and educational tool for the tri-scholes of Keppel, Toll, and Hoover and its very supportive and proactive PTSA parent groups to continually reinforce to students and parents and to teach how the median would serve as a safety enhancement in the tri-school complex. I believe it is incumbent upon us in the schools, in the tri-scholes, to teach, reinforce, and publicize and continue to remind students and parents that the median and railing is there to prevent pedestrians or students from darting across the street and causing another tragic accident. This median would additionally and undoubtedly provide the city of Glendale and the Traffic Safety Division their own teaching tool to further educate the community on the proper and safe way to walk and access any of the tri-scholes on Glenwood Road. Since the traumatic and tragic death of Mary Nobandian in October of 2008, several meetings were held and attended by the local public and our concerned parents from the tri-scholes. Many suggestions and ideas were openly heard. This extended median and accompanying fence was the result of those meetings. Having been at Hoover High School for 27 years, I do value and wish to maintain good relations with our neighbors in the vicinity of our schools. I realize that this median and fence may cause an inconvenience to our residents and I nor my colleagues are insensitive to that matter. However, in closing, I believe and feel strongly that this elongated median and fence will dramatically and purposefully and viably stand out as an excellent example for the priorities of student and pedestrian safety on Glenwood Road. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would Vic Podrosian like to speak?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council, and staff. My name is Vic Podrosian. I'm a 47-year resident of Glendale. I'm a homeowner. I've attended school in Glendale from the first grade through high school. My three children all attended Toll Middle School and Hoover High School. My youngest is currently a student at Hoover. Over these many years... Over these many years of Glendale, I've followed many of the issues involving my city, and I've had many strong opinions regarding some of these issues. I've never spoken before the council, but the issue of safety along Glenwood Road compels me to be here for the first time. To me, this issue is simple. On one side of the issue, you have a handful of homeowners trying to protect their right to conveniently use the roads adjacent to their homes. The other side of the issue is the safety of hundreds of our most vulnerable pedestrians, our youth. As a homeowner, I too would want to protect my rights. As a citizen, I think the safety of these kids supersedes my right to conveniently use the roads near any school. As a longtime resident, a former student, and a current parent, I'm very familiar with Glendale and the congestion on all of our Glendale streets. I think we would be hard-pressed to find a more dangerous environment for pedestrians anywhere in Glendale than we have on Glenwood Road today. When the pedestrians are also our children, it makes the situation even more pressing. There probably is no perfect solution to this problem, but doing nothing is the most imperfect plan of all. This situation has gone on far too long, and you must do something about it now. Preventing traffic from crossing Glenwood Road near our schools makes sense and would go a long way to protecting our students. Continued delay on such a vital issue makes no sense at all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Have two more cards, the last two cards are GUSD employees, Sabrina Sarkisian and Greg Genire. Would you like to speak? Okay, thank you very much. That'll close. Oh, you do. You're Greg?
Yeah, I'm Greg. I'm Greg Genire. I actually am not with the school district. I live on the corner of Glenwood and Virginia, and, which is sort of ground zero for all of this. Our house faces Glenwood, but our driveway is on Virginia. And I do sympathize with my neighbors whose driveways are on Glenwood, who are going to be inconvenienced by this. However, our property and, and the property of 45 of our other neighbors on Virginia essentially got this same restriction imposed on us several years ago when the street was made one-way. And we were able to deal with it. It's a little bit of an inconvenience. I have to go around the block every time I come and go from my house. But the improvement that we saw just from that change from two-way to one-way on Virginia was beyond description. There were many times we couldn't even get out of our driveway on Virginia. Now, it's by no means completely calm, but it's a whole lot better. I'm very much in favor of the median on Glenwood, and I think, I'm, I'm very happy to hear some of the solutions like the break for the fire department and things like that, and, and anything you can also do as far as designated parking for my two neighbors. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mary Mason, Kathy Kuzza, Kim Frederick.
Good evening, members of our city council, Mayor Quintero. I'm Dr. Mary Mason, principal of Mark Keppel Elementary School located at 730 Glenwood Road. I am here also with Kim Frederick, our school foundation president, and Kathy Kuzza, who is our PTA president. And it is our pleasure to speak before you this evening on behalf of our school community to address the decision you are making this evening regarding the street changes to Glenwood Road. We were all rocked by the tragic death of Mary Nambandian on October 29th, 2008. This affected our entire community of schools, as well as everyone in the city and you, our city leaders. We received wonderful support from our city management team during the aftermath of this tragedy. There was also an incredible amount of support from the meetings we had with local law enforcement, our city manager, and the traffic bureau. All these folks worked in conjunction with our school and district management teams. We met on many occasions with parents and our school PTA leaders to discuss and problem-solve ways to increase student safety. Over a period of several months this past fall and spring, our parents and our staff were an integral part of the brainstorming process that came up with the eventual plan that you have before you this evening. Keppel supports the decision to completely close the median all along Glenwood Road. While I know there are peak times when traffic amongst the three schools is congested, I am ever mindful that protecting student safety is one of our most primary missions as leaders. I know this will cause inconveniences and require changes in the normal routines of traffic flow that some, including myself, may be used to. However, as we make changes, the primary objective is always to remember the reason for why changes may need to be made. During these meetings, City Manager Starbird said to our community, "The goal is that we want drivers to notice that Glenwood Road is a street set apart, to be aware that they are entering a special place where students are present, and to drive with extra caution and care. We don't want people to ever forget Mary and what happened here." Keppel could not agree more. Thank you for letting me come before you this evening to speak about this important issue, and on behalf of everyone at Keppel, thank you for working alongside us, and thank you for your ongoing commitment to keep our students safe. And I'll invite our PTA folks.
Hi, my name is Kathy Kuzza. I'm the PTA president at Mark Keppel. And I was part of that decision-making process. I was heard, our suggestions were looked at, and I felt very comfortable with some of the changes that have been made. I've also seen some of the difference that it's made already by having the crossing guard, by having the media, median up. Although we keep working towards a better traffic flow, I think these are really good suggestions, and as part of Mark Keppel, I'd also like to support the suggestions.
And I'm Kim Frederick. I'm chairperson of Make Keppel Special, and I'm also a parent at Mark Keppel Elementary School. And just concur that I was at those meetings where those recommendations were developed. I was very pleased with the process. Some of these recommendations have been implemented, and I can tell you that parents at the school, you know, commented to me immediately as these things went into implementation, what a change and what a difference they made. I hope we continue with the good work, and I hope that the median is able to go up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. You know, I'd like to know from either the Assistant Superintendent, what is being done in addition to these mechanical and sort of physical barriers? What is being done to educate the parents? Because it's obvious to me, although there are teenagers speeding back and forth, but it's obvious to me that it's the very parents themselves that are the source of most of these issues. Is there an ongoing educational?
Yes, and once again, this has been a collaborative approach with the Safe Routes to Schools grant that we worked concurrently with the city staff. We are working and are working over the summer on education pieces for both parents and students. I believe one of the grants was funded, and we are now actually looking at, we're involving five schools, but we are taking the lessons learned from that process and applying it across our whole district.
Okay, good. Happy to hear that. Mr. Starbird.
Mr. Mayor, there was one of the issues raised by the residents. Sheehan, this doesn't have, this isn't a question for you, but one of the issues raised by the residents, I thought we might have Mr. Bagdanyan address, and that is the implications of the median on speeds on Glenwood Road. The implication being that drivers already drive fast, and this will exacerbate that situation. John O., the, the impact of medians on driving speeds?
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, our, based on our professional knowledge, that should not increase the speed. Essentially, you have a situation, if you're coming from Pacific on Glenwood, you have a signal, you have a stop at Pacific at Glenwood. You come to Concord, you have a three-way stop there, so you have to slow down. Then you got the mid-block crosswalk, which is now full, full stop, both directions. And then the next one is at Concord, we have a, a three-way stop. So, in that stretch, basically every 500 to 700 feet, you are stopping. Of course, any driver who wants to violate that and, you know, speeding between those stop signs, which they could, and I will not say that there is somebody who's not doing it, but in general, you have so many stops that to pick up speed in that distance is, is very difficult, although it's possible. The median should, essentially, all the new designs, or we're looking into narrowing streets down, so that the wider the, the street, the wider the lane, there's more potential for speeding. I will give you an example, like Lenox is one of our speedways. Unfortunately, we have 12-foot lane, we have a raised median, but it's mostly a highway. But there is signalized intersections that you can go without stopping. In this case, we shouldn't have a speeding problem or create a speeding problem. If that were to occur, obviously, we have the options of adding speedhums. We're, at this point, we haven't, you know, we haven't done that considering that, again, we have a fire emergency, has to go through the stop signs, but that could be an option in case, as we don't anticipate it, that we have to put in speedhums to deal with the speeding issue.
Thank you. Mr. Drayman.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'm sort of ready to help move the debate along on this issue. I just want to let the Hiccupians know that I am very sorry for the inconvenience to them, because it is an inconvenience. I truly am, and it is an inconvenience that is of a residential nature. However, I think Mr. Bedrosian stated the issue perfectly. I couldn't have said it any better. So I will not restate it, other than to sum up and say that the safety of our students in this area outweigh, must outweigh, the convenience of residential use. There's just absolutely no question in my mind. And I would be remiss as an elected official if I didn't point that out and if I didn't vote in that manner. There's just, there's just no other way to look at it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Let's Friedman.
Just to say that I agree, and I recognize that it's, I think everybody in this room recognizes that this is an inconvenience, and in a lot of ways, it's not fair. And it's not fair because, the reason that this is happening is because people are breaking the rules, because they're jaywalking and they're making U-turns. But unfortunately, it's, it's our children, and they're not always responsible for what they do, and we have to do whatever we can to protect them. And my hope is that it's not such an inconvenience to you that you have to move. Given that you're not supposed to be crossing there anyway, it's hard for me to, to understand how it would be such an impact. I hope that it calms traffic enough so that it gives you some relief. And I hope that Public Works and the school district can, can continue to work on the speeding issues, which I've heard from many people are happening in that whole area because of kids driving to high school. So that's something that really transcends this particular issue, but something that we all have to work on somehow. So absolutely, I would support this.
Mr. Drayman.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, and I forgot one thing. I would encourage the residents to please contact our Public Works Department, contact the city, and try to work with them in terms of taking advantage of some of the solutions they've put forward, whether it's preferential parking or special parking in the way of disabled. Even though that's not your preference, I would encourage you to, to try to take advantage of one of those remedies. Thank you.
Mr. Najarian.
I pretty much agree with what's been said. I think we have to err on the side of safety for the children. So I think we need to put the median through. I would like to maybe go a little bit further than Mr. Drayman's suggestion of working with staff to get the preferential parking. Let's not put them through all the red tape that, that they otherwise have to do, even though it's just a small section, you know, as well as I do. I mean, let's just give them the best solution that would suit their needs, almost a custom-tailored solution for them, whether it's, we paint it red and let them have like a free path. Work on that. I mean, I, you, you certainly know the, the toolkit much better than we do. The only other thing I want to raise is, the point of this median is to prevent cars from turning, but also to prevent students from crossing. Correct? And it's a 36-inch fence, which is about the size of that, and any second grader could hop over that fence with a backpack and still make it across without missing a beat. Do we want to make it a little bit higher to really make sure no kids cross?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Najarian, it's 36-inch fence piece on top of the median.
But it's a four-foot median.
Less four-foot width. The median's going to be at least another six inches high.
They still get their planting foot and, you know.
So you'll, you'll be closer to 42 inches at the, at the, the height of the fence.
Let's just take a look at that and make sure that it's not going to be too.
We can do that.
Too much of a challenge. I mean, kids will, you know, that's a, that's a hurdle for, for many children.
I'm also, Mr. Najarian, to add to that, if I'm not mistaken, I'll just look to Mr. Mitchell, we have the spike wrought iron feature on top of this.
Ouch! Ouch!
No, I'm kidding. But one of the things we were, we were contemplating is, is sight distance and that kind of thing, but, but we, we are, we can go ahead and check again to see if the height, we can stretch the height.
I'd be happy to, to give authority to propose in the motion, giving you enough flexibility to make, make sure the height is of a sufficient, the fence is of a sufficient height to accomplish what you're seeking to accomplish in terms of stopping the pedestrians crossing.
That would be great. We can do that.
Mr. Drayman.
Mr. Mayor, are you ready for a motion?
Yeah, let me just comment. I, I feel the same way, and I think it's absolutely essential that we make it easy for the residents, not only the residents that spoke tonight, but the adjoining home and that corner home, if you so desires. We make it easy for them to acquire their permit parking. Not handicap, because I agree with the speaker that there's an inordinate amount of people running around with blue handicap placards, but that we make it specifically permit parking for those residents. But I do agree that this is important, and we need to do it. And then my other comment is, you know, let's face the facts. There may be teenagers running up and down in their high-powered cars, but the reality is that it is the parents, and I've seen it on Glenwood, and I've seen it on Highland. It is the parents themselves that really need to be educated by the school district. Sad to say that, because they're adults raising children. But some of the erratic driving that I see from parents, dropping their kids and picking their kids up, it's just atrocious. So in addition to the police patrols, hopefully the PTA and the administration can focus on trying to get the parents calmed down. But at any rate, I'm happy we're moving forward with this, and hopefully it's going to be somewhat decorative, somewhat Hoover High looks very nice. I drove by yesterday and done a great job on the facade, so we'll have a decorative element. But I agree with Mr. Najarian, let's make it high enough that it won't be challenged by, by the middle school athletes. Mr. Drayman.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I will move 8A, I guess it's 8A1, with the addition of expedited preferential parking, that notion, and the notion of the discretion Public Works on the median height.
Hold a second. Any other comments? Roll call.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next, please.
At item 8B, Director of Public Works regarding City of La Canada, Flint Ridge, seeking approval by the Glendale City Council to create an assessment district for various sewer improvements, including six parcels located in the city of Glendale. At 8B1 is a resolution granting consent for the formation of an assessment district by the City of La Canada, Flint Ridge.
Okay, does anyone need a report? I have a motion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll move 8B1.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman. Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian. We, I'm sorry, Mayor Quintero.
Yes. You know, there are people here who are waiting to speak on the, on the Design Review Board appeal. So let me ask, how many people are here for 9A, the Director of Planning, proposed fees for Planning Department?
We can just move that real quick, if you want to.
Well, no, I, I did have some, some questions about, all right, well, why don't we, we'll
hold back on 9A, and let's move to 9B, the Design Review Board case. Could you read that into the record?
At item 9B, Director of Planning, regarding Appeal of Design Review Board Case Number 1-PDR-2008-089-A, located at 2064 Buckingham Place. 9B1 is a motion sustaining the Design Review Board's decision to approve the Design Review Board application, and 9B2, a motion to overturn or reverse the Design Review Board's decision to approve the Design Review Board application.
All right, anyone wishing to speak on item 9B, please turn in a speaker card. Mr. Starburn.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, let me go to Sonagani, Director of Planning, with a staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll go to Villia Zamaititis, the senior planner who's been working on this case, and who's prepared the staff report and a slide presentation. Thank you.
What are you seeing? Is actually an appeal of 2064 Buckingham Place, Design Review Board Case Number 1-PDR-2008-089-A. The project consisted of the remodeling and expansion of an existing 2,030-square-foot one-story, single-family residence on a 30,000-square-foot flag lot. By adding 252 square feet on the first floor, constructing a new 1,800-square-foot second story, and providing an additional single-car garage space for the required three-car garage. The slide you see before you is a location map depicting the flag lot, which is actually a through lot. It has frontages both on Buckingham and on Chevy Chase. The aerial photograph slide depicts the development pattern within the hillside, single-family residential neighborhood. You'll notice that the 30,000, 30,400-square-foot subject parcel is accessed off, and this is, I'll use, there you go, is accessed off an angled flag lot on Buckingham, and it has a steeply sloped rear yard lot down towards Chevy Chase. Here is the site plan that was submitted for the Design Review Board, for the Design Review Board project case. The site plan shows the proposed building footprint outlined in gray, the angled flag lot off of Buckingham, and the steeply sloped rear yard on Chevy Chase. You'll also notice that the adjacent property owner, who is the appellant for this case, his property is outlined as depicted by the arrow. Here is the existing floor plan showing the attached two-car garage, and the proposed first-floor plan with the existing building outline, as well as the additional single-car garage, in addition to the rear of approximately 200 square feet, and the portion that's in hatch marked green, that is a two-story balcony addition. Here you'll see the proposed second-floor plan, the second-floor plan outlined in gray that is actually set back approximately, or actually more than 20 feet, from the existing front elevation. This is the photo showing the existing home with the required story poles. You'll notice that the distinctive entry feature has been carried out into the next slide, and this entry feature is part of the current two-story proposal. The Designer Review Board commented that the clean, modern, contemporary design, featuring appropriate, modern finishes and colors, is appropriate to the neighborhood. They praised the execution of the design, and they also commented on the fact that the second story, in their opinion, was appropriately massed, the second story being pushed back to the rear of the structure, that the front portion remains one story. You'll notice here would be the elevation facing the appellant's property, this would be the interior property line, and then the rear elevation facing the slope to the rear. The project was approved back on April 2, 2009, with conditions, only three conditions. Those would be to reduce the bulk of the second story on the northeast side of the home. This would be the portion actually back here and in the back along this area. The second item was to submit plans for a front gate and wall, and the third was to ensure that the new driveway portions utilize the existing pavers. The project was appealed by the adjacent property owner, Mr. Margarian, based on three facets. One, that there's be a negative impact to, and the blocking of sunlight and views to his adjacent home. Two, that the mass was inconsistent with the neighborhood, and three, that the house size would be inconsistent with the neighborhood average. You see before you on the slide, the proposed site plan. You'll notice that the interior property line dividing the two properties is outlined in red. The second-story addition portion of the home is outlined in yellow. To the south, you'll notice that this would be the one-story portion, that would be the three-car garage, and the appellant's property to the east, outlined in purple. The neighbor's and appellant's home is actually angled away from the interior property line. At the closest point, and you'll notice here on the next slide, the closest point is actually 18 feet setback from the interior property line, and at the farthest point, there's a 30-foot setback. This does not include the six-foot required setback for the current proposal. Yes?
What part of, of the appellant's house is that? Is that a bedroom side, a rear side?
This is a two, this is a two-story easterly elevations. I believe there are bedrooms up above, inhabitable space down below.
I'm talking about the...
The appellant.
The appellant. The appellant's would be, again, on, this would be facing the appellant's, okay, that would be the appellant's. You mean the applicant's portion for the project proposal?
No.
On the appellant, yes, it would be habitable space, bedrooms up on top on the second floor.
But they have a second, they have...
They do have a second floor.
Already a two-story house.
Yes, they are.
Oh.
Yes, I have photographs, actually, of the home.
Do you have an elevation that shows both houses together?
No, there was no cross-section submitted for this particular proposal. To continue, also, the Designer Review Board, actually, in their deliberations, and following much discussion, made note the fact that the massing would be, of the two-story, would be to the rear. And so, by keeping the front portion of the project one story, due to also the angling of the lot and the setback of the adjacent property, the views basically would be continued across the one-portion story of the home down Chevy Chase Canyon. And you'll notice here, it would be the views down this particular corridor. So although the views perhaps would be compromised, if you look directly a little bit to the north, obviously, there'd be a second-story home, the majority of the views down south, towards Chevy Chase Canyon South, would be maintained. Again, the Designer Review Board also discussed the fact that the zoning code does not regulate or protect private views from existing homes and properties, but this is something that in their deliberations, they took note of. The appeal was also based on the house size. This is a table showing the averages and ranges of lot size, house size, floor area for the properties, all within 300 feet, as well as the proposed subject property. Yes, the proposed house size is larger than the average. You'll notice here, the average house size is approximately just over 2,000 square feet. The proposal is at 4,000 square feet. But also, in terms of numerical comparisons, the lot size average is 18,000, approximately 400 square feet. The subject proposal property is at 30,000 square feet, which is significantly larger. And when you take a look at the floor area ratio, which would be the house size in comparison to the lot size, the neighborhood average is at 0.16, and the subject proposal is at 0.13. So when you look at the, the comparison of the house size versus the lot size...
But once again, we're not taking into consideration the flat pad, but we're...
Correct. That is correct.
Using angles like this to...
Yes.
...lie at the square footage and floor area ratios.
Yet also, the DRB, and this was noted in the staff report, the Designer Review Board is not only charged with taking a look at the numerical comparisons in terms of house size, but the Designer Review Board is also charged at taking a look at architectural style, height, setbacks, massing, scale, landscaping, fenestration of window patterns. And so, when the Designer Review Board deliberated, they took a look at the angled flag lot, so that the house is situated at the northeast corner, tucked away from Buckingham Place, as well as the fact that it's on a building pad that sits atop a steeply sloped portion up from Chevy Chase. Opposite direction. You'll notice here, and again, for those items, location of the home and the topography of the site, the Designer Review Board felt that those two qualities helped diminish the perceived massing and scale of this larger home. You'll see before you a photograph showing the project site as viewed from Buckingham Street. The appellant's home is shown on the right, you'll notice here, the flag lot driveway leading to the property, and the landscaping that greatly blocks views from Buckingham Place. You'll notice now, in, now in yellow, the location of the story poles. This is essentially where the second-story addition would be visible from Buckingham Street, tucked behind. Here you have a photograph as viewed from, of the project site, as viewed from Chevy Chase Drive. Chevy Chase, in this particular portion down below, is extremely winded. It doesn't have any sidewalks. There is no on-street parking, so the majority of the people traveling on Chevy Chase would be traveling at speeds and would essentially have to somehow rather park and look up at the site in order to see the, the home and its second-story addition. This photograph illustrates the story poles in relation to the appellant's second-story window locations. You'll notice, again, the first story is going to be maintained, the second story will be set back approximately 20 feet, and the visibility of the windows of the appellant's home would indicate that those views, at least in this particular direction, are being The project, again, as repeated, was approved with conditions. One was to reduce the bulk of the second story on the northeast side of the home, as well as submitting plans for the front gate and walls for staff review, and driveway pavers. The applicant has actually submitted tentative plans for your review that were included in your packet, in which he has addressed these items. The particular site plan, in this case, it was the second-floor plan that was submitted, shows that what was previously an ad room has now been eliminated, thereby reducing the rear of the structure by approximately 10 feet, and then reducing it approximately 200 square feet in total. And this would be on the second floor. Again, staff's recommendation would be that City Council sustain the Designer Review Board approval of the project, and include the Designer Review Board's three conditions of approval. That concludes staff's presentation. We wanted to keep it to a minimum, because we know you do not like lengthy PowerPoint presentations, but we felt that pictures are worth a thousand words in this case. So if you have any questions, I'm available to answer them.
Questions?
Do you have a slide of the revised plans with the, with the, the conditions executed for the public to see?
We had just prepared this. This was very, at the end, spur of the moment, last decision. Those were not copied as part of your packets. We just had them in case those were, those items were questioned.
Can you show us maybe on that elevation?
Sure.
Was it that from on the far row?
The top, the top, forgive me?
Sorry.
Yes, on, on the top, you'll notice that this is what was approved by the Designer Review Board. The applicant has submitted plans showing that this would be the removal of that second floor, what was called an ad room. And so you see more of a step-back, I don't, we don't want to call it the wedding cake, but more of a, a step-back feature from both the front and the rear elevations. This particular slide shows the elevations that would be, the elevation facing the appellant's home. Again, you'll notice that that ad room that was on the second floor has been eliminated, and there is more of a step-back or setback to the rear. And this would be the elevation, the rear or the most northerly elevation facing that steeped slope to the north.
Any other questions or comments from the staff? Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing.
It was a 3-0 decision?
Yes, it was a 3-0.
And two of the, Insoa and Aliano were not there.
Correct. Board members, board members in Insoa and Aliano were absent that day.
Okay. All right, so I'm going to open the public hearing, and we're going to have the appellant go first. Is the appellant in the room? The appellant...
Gregor Ngirion.
Okay. Would you, would you let me know how much time you would like?
Um...
10 minutes?
10, 15 minutes should be enough.
No, we need to make it, let's say 15.
I'll try to be brief.
Okay, so the appellant will, no, you can take all the time you want. The appellant will have his 15 minutes, and...
Up with the yellow spots?
Okay. And then the...
It's upside down.
It's upside down.
The appellant will go first for 15 minutes, then the applicant will make their presentation, and be given the same amount of time.
He's going to, he's gonna give...
And then the appellant will get to rebut the applicant's testimony. You understand that, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
At order. When do we hear from the public?
Um, I think after the...
Yes, Mr. Mayor, you'll have the appellant, then the applicant, then the public, and then the rebuttal.
Actually, yeah, we'll have the public and then the rebuttal.
Of course, of course.
First, we'll stay here.
Okay, are you ready to proceed?
Thank you. Gregor Ngirion, 2060 Buckingham Place, I live to the east of the property, which is going to be remodeled. Thank you, Mr. Quintero, for giving me this opportunity, council, staff member, and here citizens. Will you flip through the map? I, I prepared the case, an answer to a couple of questions here, which actually were not changed since the last, since the last review. So there are a few points which I'd like to express here. Okay. If I may approach to the map...
I will give you a map.
First, oh, okay. I believe, do I press something? This is, this is my property, 2060, and this is 2064. If we look at this aerial map... If we look at this aerial map, I guess, and then we go back a couple of slides where draft was there, we'll see my house is kind of shifted down to the street, which they don't, they're not the same though, this map and the draft. Okay. So let me just continue, and in the last caveat, to show the other map also, the draft also. There are a few points I'd like to present here. Mass and scale, architectural style, unsensitivity to neighbors and neighborhood, new findings, other cases in the neighborhood, and what's next, and summary. Definition is the, I believe, is the cornerstone in every discussion. The right definition, I'm saying this as a mathematician with my mathematical background, so if you don't have right definitions, you can't talk, discuss anything. The right definition is probably the most important part of this communication. There are a few keywords who are being used in this case. Modest, compliance with the neighborhood, and mass and scale, I guess. So I'll get back to that. So what modest, let's say what modest mean to you in this case. From 2,000 going to 5,000, does it sound modest? To me, it's not. I don't know what other people will say here. If from 2,000 to, let's say, 2,200, is it? You'll probably say yes. So how about 200% increase here? I mean, just for simple case, if somebody's salary, your colleague's salary is $100,000, let's say, for simplicity, and he gets raised to 200K, will you call it modest raise? I hope not. I wouldn't. The size of the proposed plan is greatly over the size of average home, and Viliya mentioned that. In this Queen's single-family neighborhood, the average home size is 2,200, she shows 2,400, but that's pretty much in the range. This new home will be close to 5,000 square foot, 4,097 habitable. It will tower over its neighbors, it's me, leaving them in a shadow, depriving from the natural sunlight, light, and view. That's why I say my house is pretty much here, is two bedrooms on this side are completely, almost completely covered. One is 100%, the other bedroom is about 80% blocked, like a prison wall in front of me. Okay, in this, this was a quiet neighborhood, that's why, was one of the reasons why we moved into this neighborhood, into this house. And the original, in the original design of this whole neighborhood, it probably was done by the same designer. Every house was laid out in the best way possible, so privacy and consideration will take into consideration and to help the residents who will occupy them. Doubling the size and adding additional rooms to one home's design, does it constitute a modest change? Let's accept what happened here is rather a new construction. By the way, on the project plan, architect says it's only 31% is being changed on the draft there. Ceiling will be demolished, 645 square foot of the ceiling will be demolished. You're going from 2,000, 30 square foot to 5,000. To my understanding, whatever I have read so far about this, if room framing is removed, it is a new construction. New house will be larger, like I reiterate that in neighborhood. And then, yes, Viliya said they have 30,000 square foot going down the slope, very steep But you're not using that lot, you're going up, you're building a mansion there. Therefore, this lot size, the use of lot size is deceiving. You're going up, you're not using that spot. How many more mansions are going to be built on the same small lots under the pretense that steep hill will technically is their property? In the rebuttal, you're not diminishing the mass, I would say you're concealing the mass. Rebuttal is done in a form of tweaking definitions and camouflaging this reality. And while everyone, I don't deny that, has rights to remodel the home to the better they needs, to fit their needs, it is up to the board, of course, to make judgment and make sure all the changes are done fairly with consideration to all the people around them. Compliance with City Code is not the only factor in approving the project. That would be the case, we don't need the DRB, we don't need the board. Let's rubber stamp them and go on. DRB brings human factor into these cases. Otherwise, I mean, I don't know what DRB is all about. If engineers find it so compatible, let's use it and go on. Now, item two, architectural style. Very important point is how this, this house does not comply with the range style architecture of this neighborhood. It's a modern mansion, agree with me, please, and lovely, beautiful, but it will change this historic neighborhood forever. In rebuttal, it says neighbor's home is angled away. That's to you. To me, it's angled towards. Depends how you look at it. In rebuttal, it's amazingly stated that range style, which we have in all this neighborhood, and the contemporary style, which is going to be, are compatible anyway because they are used straight forward forms. Well, what do I have to bring here? Goudis are rather familiar, so to be non-compatible, straight lines are in any case. So contemporary and range style are compatible. Thank you for new theory in the architecture. Number three, unsensitivity to neighbors and neighborhood. You might argue that design is modern, hardly visible to anyone, but it's hardly the case here. The pictures we have presented here clearly indicate that house is and will be visible from Chevy Chase Canyon, Viliya, you misled the public, and from the Buckingham Road here. This is view from Buckingham Road. Not place, we live on Buckingham Place. That's a Buckingham view from Buckingham Road. And you say it is not visible from Buckingham Caldesac because it's tucked behind the tree. That's my tree on my property. If I decide to cut it one day, our fire department will come and say, diminish them. What I will do, it will be visible there. As one of my friends suggested, suggested, this is the expression I kind of like, they are three, three away from being exposed to the Buckingham Caldesac. Three, three away. Now, new findings. The location map on the file was from completely another case, Chevy Chase Drive. So I guess based on this 500-foot radius or diameter, mailings were done. My neighbors did not receive those mails. At least I asked four neighbors, one received, and I'm the fifth one. Probably they couldn't ignore me. So why, what is this from? Where is this coming from? Why it's not my map? I'm not trying to be rude, but just... So why did it not receive? Now, I'd like to, Viliya, bring your attention also to the cases in the neighborhood. There is a case on April 30th of this year, 3431 Linda Vista case was denied. Guy was building, on a huge lot, he was building a house. The lot is much bigger than this one. Still, case was denied. And let me bring a couple of quotations from there. DRB quotation, from the DRB summary. "In order to maintain compatibility with existing homes, new infill projects should respect existing site plan patterns." Another one. "New home construction is also encouraged to incorporate existing elements that is commonly found in the neighborhood, such as roof type, roof styles." Do we see it here? "New projects are encouraged to respect and preserve existing character and the rhythm of neighborhood." Do you see that? Another one. "The site planning, building mass and form, architectural details, materials should be further explored to achieve high quality," and so on and so on, "and even more sensitive to the adjoining properties and existing neighborhoods." I don't see any respect to me, sorry. I'd like to mention, in this case, in my case, we have a case of maximum insensitivity. One room is completely blocked, the other, just prison wall in front of me, and I wake up in the morning to see that, or my kids. And the second room is about 80% blocked. Viliya says in her case, it's not completely blocked. Thank you. 95% is not completely blocked. Prisoner gets to see one hour a day of sunlight. Thank you. Another denied case, June 11th case, 3507 Ferrista, I guess that's La Crecenda. It was denied. Shift the massing away from the western property line, that's the neighbor's line. Minimize the vertical nature of design. Person did it, I guess it went to DRB and will approve lately. I was watching all those cases on the internet in your video archive. So what's next now? What is to stop others from ruining this neighborhood, modest, historic, range community, with modern mansions? If this case is approved, how many more mansions we're going to have here? And this will set an example, right? Just somewhere here. I don't want, I believe I'm trying to stick in my time range here. We don't want to, we cannot deprive anyone from the rights to develop and improve the residence. We just want to be done fairly, with consideration, not on our expense. Hillside can be nicely used, and overall size doesn't have to be that big. It's too large, too incompatible, and not modest at all. Its size cannot be justified being hidden behind neighbor's trees. Thank you.
Okay, are there any questions for the appellant?
I have a question for the case planner. Question. Given that they have a sloped roof now, and this is for staff, given that they have a sloped roof now and they're moving to a flat roof, what's the actual height difference from what they have now, and what they're going to have?
I would have to take a look at the case file to see what the existing overall height is for the current home. There was some discussion at the designer view board meeting, the fact that they are using a flat roof, with an overall height of 25 feet. If they were to pitch that, it would go higher than 25. So that was the whole basis of having a flat roof.
Right, well, that might be a good piece of information to have.
Would you like to...
While the next speaker's...
Of course.
And, I'm sorry, just, I was suggesting them to go down. Most of houses on Buckingham Road, that's the next street here, they're done this way. On one side, houses are built, whatever, two-story, most of them are two-story, and the other ones are going down the hill. So that's the case, everybody's happy.
Okay, are you through then? All right, if you'll take your exhibit...
Thank you. May I just, just to have it on the file?
Can, to the clerk.
Mr. Mayor, also, those photos have to be part of the record.
Okay.
Yes.
So the clerk will have to hold on to it.
All right.
We've just received confirmation that the existing home is 16 feet, 4 inches, is that correct? Based on submitted plans, it has an overall height of 16 feet. So they're going from 16 feet to 25.
Okay. All right, sir, if you'll take a seat, we'll hear from the applicant.
Mr. Mayor, if you'll allow, just one second, please. One of my neighbors who was going to be here, he couldn't, because of the health conditions, he couldn't be here, and he asked, he actually emailed his memo to the city council to Viliya as my digest, and also he asked me to either to read, or somebody, maybe secretary can read.
Actually, I was going to mention the memo. All of you have received it on the digest prior to the meeting, so the memo has been distributed.
All right, have a seat, and we'll hear from the applicant. Is the applicant in the audience? No? Are you the applicant? Would you like to speak? Or your architect? No? Okay. All right, then we'll, what's that? Why don't you come to the, and tell me who you are, identify yourself, and if you don't want to speak, you don't have to.
No, we didn't sign the...
That's okay.
The card, yeah.
And fill one out later.
Armin Makertian, 2064 Buckingham Place.
Okay, and are you the applicant?
Yes.
For the project?
Yes, I'm living in that address for six years.
Okay, and would you like to say anything?
No, I think we already did what we have to do. I mean, we comply with the design review board, the conditions, so architect already provided new plan with the changes that we made, so I don't know what to say, I mean...
Okay, well, let me ask you something.
Yeah.
What did you say your name was?
Armin. Armin Makertian.
Okay, the applicant is listed as Albert...
Yeah.
Is he the architect?
Mr. Albert is the architect, correct.
All right. Okay, we'll go ahead and fill out a card and give it to the clerk, and we'll just have you as part of the record.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so now we'll go to the public, and have a number of cards. We'll start with James Matsuda. James Matsuda. All right. Nari Name is Zoyan. Nari Name is Zoyan.
Enough was said, and I would stress few points...
You need to say your name for the record.
Well, Noreen Muzoyan, owner of the Buckingham, 2060 Buckingham Place, same house. Yeah, a few points, I want to present counterpoints to the staff rebuttal. Regarding the mass and scale, site planning, I would cite a few phrases from the site planning summary. The keyword to the modest addition will not significantly change the footprint. Okay, footprint maybe, but addition is not modest. The proposed project is only partially visible from Buckingham Place and not fully visible from Chevy Chase. Okay, but it is well-visible from Buckingham Road. The existing one-story home is screened behind the mature trees and landscaping. The mature trees in question is pine tree in our lawn, and the screens there, house, you can't expect that the tree will sustain for a long time without streaming or any other changes by us or our potential future residents, who knows? Therefore, just hopeful that that will forever conceal the new development is just wrong. The main justification to the project's mass and scale in a previous meeting that led to the approval was based upon a statement that, yes, it's massive but not visible, hence no visual impact on the neighborhood. When I presented the picture from Buckingham Road that proved opposite, it's the fact it's visible well. Staff abandoned their previous opinion and tries to explain that question is not whether it can be seen or not, but whether the proposal is compatible. So, well, that's a different approach. So how can two houses separated merely by 20 feet be compatible in size when one will be more than twice bigger than the other? Or by style? When one is a range, range-style home and the other is contemporary modern, the two styles cannot be more different, and one does not need to be a professional to see that. Thus, mass and style will stand out in the context of the neighborhood. That's a fact, no matter the flip-flopping approaches used by the staff to try to conceal it. We appreciate the attempt made by board to solve the mass portion of the issue by suggesting to eliminate the added room on the second floor, which will reduce the size by 200 feet. This is an attempt in the right direction, but not a solution for the issues. Architectural style. Drastic contracts to range modern style, no matter how many windows and balconies, you will try to break up the facade. It's not, it's not fit. Relationship to adjacent buildings. You said the addition would not completely block the sunlight from the neighbor's window. Then how you will explain, the picture's already closed, but there are clear pictures taken from the windows of our second story, all bedrooms. from the windows of our second story, all bedrooms. How is possible to take this kind of pictures if the view or sound will not be blocked? If you have doubts about the pictures, then why not, no one from staff came to our house to see with their own eyes, even after we encouraged them to do so? These pictures were on the file for long enough. Anyone who takes seriously concerns of impact of the neighborhood and relationship with adjacent buildings should have come and evaluated all the sides of the impact, not just one.
Okay, you'll have to finish up, please.
Yeah, I just, I just want to add a few things. The hillside development is very common for the area where you can satisfy your desire for multi-level dwelling. In fact, if you walk down the Buckingham Road, you will see on the right-hand side the two stories are built on a slope, and that helps to keep the space open for the left-hand side houses. In a conclusion, I will suggest hillside development is a solution that will not block us. Please reduce the mass and size to be consistent with the neighborhood. Please change the style to be consistent also.
Okay, thank you. Anna Magarian, followed by Harut Markarian. We need your name for the record, and you have to speak into the mic.
Apologize. Anna Magarian. I'm a resident at twenty-sixty Buckingham Place. So I just wanted to take a few seconds to go over my room and my brother's room. The two, thank you. The two rooms up here at the top, it's my room and that's my brother's. My brother is a UCLA student who chose to stay at home and spends most of his time in his room studying. And as you can see by the flags at the, on the picture, the view that he wakes up to every morning and the sunlight that he wakes up to every morning will be blocked, leaving him in a dim room. My room will be completely in darkness, as you see. From what I have now is a somewhat of a valley view, hillside view, and what I'll have remaining is just the back of someone's house. And a few other points, our backyard now just gets light from our neighbors, from above our neighbor's roof, above our neighbor's house. The rest of the backyard is covered by a hill. And so by building upwards, they're basically going to deprive us of the, us and our backyard or orchard, our plum, peach trees of the light that they need. And so my point basically is, please, you know, I don't want to stop anyone from developing their property and making their home more convenient for them, but don't do it at our expense. This is a really high price to pay for their development. This is a home we moved in, this is a home we chose due to its view and its area, and that's going to change completely, and, you know, we have no say in that, basically. So thank you for that. And I'm sorry, one more thing, these are the neighboring houses. I don't know if that was presented earlier. The ranch-style homes were mentioned. That's our home, these are the two neighboring homes, and this is the new planned development. Thank you.
Ms. Friedman?
I have a question. I'm just trying to understand a little bit of the neighborhood context. So you have a really beautiful view to that side, and I can understand why you would be reluctant to lose even part of it. The house on the other side of you, are they also a two-story or are they a one-story?
They're a one-story house, and we don't have any windows facing on that side for their privacy.
So when they look through their windows, what are they looking at?
Their windows, I'm trying to remember, their, their living room windows are, let's see.
Do they have that same nice view that you do?
I'm sorry? It's a two-story? Yeah. They have a hillside on this side, and their windows are out here. The gap between our houses is bigger, and they're surrounded by a hillside, like they're encased in a hill.
So they only, they have a view of an upslope of a hill in the back, and from the side, are they looking at your house?
There's a private, we don't have windows on that side, they don't have.
I understand. Do they, do they have the same view of the valley that you do?
No. I don't believe, I've never been to their second floor, so I don't really know. Sure.
Oh, you can't.
Okay, that's okay, I got it. Thank you very much.
Your appellant's already spoken.
Yeah.
Okay, are you done? Okay, thank you very much. Harut Markarian, followed by Larry Barnes.
My name is Harut Markarian, and I truly appreciate the opportunity to speak here on behalf of the Magarians. This project came to my attention through them, and as their friend but also as a citizen of Glendale, I'm concerned about this trend of mansionization. Make no mistake, this, this house is visible. I've stood on the block. And as of today, when you stand there looking at it, you see the story poles all the way from, from the road that the house is located on, but also from down the hill. We're not concerned so much about the hill, like the, as they mentioned, that you can't really see it from Chevy Chase Canyon, but when you're sitting on the road, you definitely see the house. And the issue is, it truly doesn't match. That neighborhood, the reason people move there is, is a ranch-style neighborhood. The look and feel and the charm and the ambiance, it's been there for decades, and it only takes one house to completely take that away. In this case, this is the house that's come to concern. So what we're encouraging them to do is to build a house with a mass and bulk that matches the neighborhood. If you look at the municipal code of Glendale, thirty-eleven, four-oh-four, A, it says, "Development shall be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood in terms of size, scale, bulk and mass, roofline orientation." So they mentioned that the scale, if you look at proportionally by the lot size, perhaps it fits in. But if you look at the size of the house, it's double the size of every other house on the block. The bulk and mass and the roofline, even by their admittance, being a flat roofline does not match the block at all. Furthermore, the architectural style and the elements of the house in E don't match. It has to fill in development and shall be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. So in both of those cases, the house being proposed is grossly out of context with the neighborhood. The issue is, we keep setting precedent, one house after another in Glendale that we allow to be mansionized, sets precedent block after block. If we have any intention to preserve the historical look of Glendale, we got to preserve it block by block. In this case, this house is the matter on this block. As of now, the entire block has that ranch style. This will be the first breach in that wall. So we are encouraging the city just to curb it here, to stop it here, not just with this block in this neighborhood, but throughout Glendale. When we've zoned the neighborhood's R-one-R, let's stick to what we had originally voted for as a city, to have that kind of zoning protected. That's the point we're here to make. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Larry Barnes, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Good evening. I'm Larry Barnes. I'm president of the Chevy Chase Homeowners Association and a resident of Glendale. I'm here representing the appellant. He is a member of our association, and the Board of Directors of the Chevy Chase Estates Association has unanimously approved opposing this particular DRB project. There are so many issues this case brings to the court forefront. It is a test of the new DRB procedures whereby planning works closely with applicants in terms of bringing a project forward to the DRB. It points to the influence that the planning staff has on DRB discussions. It points to the influence that staff has on the way that they word basically the findings and the recommendations. I come out of advertising. I know the power of words. I know the power of phrasing of words. And I'm concerned the degree to which the planning department has, maybe by just coincidence and maybe in our discussion to revise the DRB process, maybe we've gone a little bit too far. Because I feel that when I, when I watch DRB meetings and I watched this meeting and I have, and I have read all of the documents, I see how planning has really moved to support a foregone conclusion. So that is an issue. This case also points to, as the last speaker said, to the need for an ordinance regarding mansionization and privacy. Now clearly, this particular project doesn't involve privacy. The applicant has graciously raised the window levels to the point that privacy is not an issue. But certainly, massing, massing is and mansionization is. And I think this case really goes to the point that we need to consider property rights of immediate neighbors in addition to the neighborhood itself. The appellant mentioned that no one took the time to actually stand in their property to see how that, those story poles and that remodeling would affect their piece of property. I did. I have stood in their bedrooms. I know what they will be looking at, and no, they will not have a view looking forward to the front of the property. And in fact, if you look at, I don't know how to work this little thing, but.
Just hold it.
Hold it there. If you look at the site plan, and what the appellant was trying to say is that the site plan, the drawing from, drawing from the architect, positions the appellant's house even further down this block. If you look at what is two-story versus one-story, the appellant's house is split about in half. And so, yes, the, there is no second story over the garage, but again, that is only a view from the appellant's first story. And so it really is not relevant. I would go on to say, and I guess we only had, we have fewer minutes, if I could continue, Mayor, I would appreciate it, is that when I talk about, when we talk about language, they say only ten-point-seven percent of the lot is used for this piece of property. Well, of course it is. Ninety percent of the property is on a steep downslope that is not buildable. And if you get an FAR of point-one-three, which is below code, of course it is. We're talking about a four-thousand-square-foot house on a very small, buildable pad, double the size of any other home in the neighborhood. It is not modest. We are talking a test case, I believe, with this city council of what neighborhood compatibility really means. This is double the size of any home in the neighborhood. It's doubling the size of the house, and the compatibility doesn't stop there. We are told that ranch is the same as modern because they have similar flat building lines. I live in a ranch house. I know what ranch is, and modern is not ranch. And, and so again, it goes to the appellant's point, we're dealing with definitions. This project violates every element of neighborhood compatibility that I can imagine. And we, as a homeowners' association, vehemently oppose this, the approval of this project by the DRB. It violates all common sense. And I would urge this council to basically adopt the second motion and basically turn down or to support the appellant. The appellant has made the case. It's the tree, his own trees, that block the view of this monstrosity. Again, not mentioned in the report. And so I think that planning needs to be very careful as to how they position and how they report facts to you as a city council and facts to the DRB so that indeed intelligent decisions can be made based upon the facts that are available to everyone.
They have to wrap it up this way.
Just in, one last point that I, we recognize that the, there was a reduction in the second story. It was a hundred-and-fifty-six-point-seven-five square feet, based upon the dimensions of the building, not two-hundred square feet, tucked back into the hillside so that it does not affect the massing approach of the property. So even the conditions that were set forth did not fix the problem of too much scale, too much mass and incompatibility with the neighborhood.
Thank you. Did you want to speak? Okay, go ahead.
Is he the last speaker?
No. State your name for the record.
Armin McCurchan, twenty-sixty-four Buckingham Place, resident of the title.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. Excuse me, sir. Mr. Mayor, since he is the applicant, he also can speak at the end, at the end of all the comments but before the appellant's rebuttal presentation, if he wants to wait to do that. It's his choice.
What would you like to do? Would you like to wait until?
Oh, there's more people?
No, it's up to you. Yeah, there's more people.
Okay, I can wait.
It might be better because there might be other points that come up that you might want to address.
Sure, sure, yeah.
All right, Margaret Hammond.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, staff, and audience. My name is Margaret Hammond, longtime resident of Glendale. This is mansionization in the, in the word glorified, I would say, to go from an area where the average is twenty-two-hundred square feet to five thousand, plus, I believe, six-hundred-and-seventy-one for the garage, were the figures I took down. The size is not compatible, the plan is not, since when is a ranch house the same as modern? That's cuckoo. I mean, anybody knowing anything about styles of houses. Having lived in an old neighborhood for many, many years, I, and I'm no expert, I know the difference. I look at a modern house across the street from me, even though the houses on both sides of me are Tudor, I think it's an eyesore, but somebody liked it and somehow it got through. I happen to think that this is not just a fly in the ointment of the, as far as an ordinance is concerned, but I think this is a huge bumblebee that's fallen into it. And I think it ought to be really considered. I mean, to me, it's like having Gulliver come in on the Lollaputians and build itself a castle. Can you just imagine that one? And I really believe that this is not in the best interest of the city of Glendale overall. It sets precedent again and again, and we, I thought this was something that we were trying to avoid, and it doesn't seem like we're avoiding the effect that it's having on neighborhoods. It's ugly to stick something down that doesn't belong in the middle of a neighborhood, an established neighborhood. We've seen it, you've seen it. Up in the Vidugo Woodlands was a home built there that was just the ugliest thing you ever saw, destroyed the whole street. What effect does that have on the real estate value also of the home next door, that they no longer have a view that's available to them, that when they bought that home, it was, and now it's taken away that? And that does affect the real estate value. I really feel that this should be overturned, overturn the decision of the review board, and that's the young man that got up, Harut Markarian. I thought he did a terrific job, terrific. He stayed to the point and, and to what the ordinance was about and gave a very good account on it. So I thank you very much for listening to me, and this is times when we miss Dick Murray, I know. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bill Taramina, followed by Mike O'Hill.
Hi, my name is Bill Taramina. I didn't know I was talking tonight, but I guess I am, so. Anyway, I'm a neighbor, and to me, this is a classic case of mansionization that I thought we were trying to prevent in this city. I happen to, oh, yeah, here's the pointer. Here's the, the house doing the addition, and I'm right here. You were talking about the, the fact that, I think it was, Ms. Friedman was talking about what was this house here? And this is a two-story house, and basically, this is, this is one project that was built by a developer, I think, in the mid-sixties. This one block, it starts down here, and it comes. This one block, it starts down here, and it comes up a hill, and then it comes into the cul-de-sac. This is about the level part of this block right here. This is a hill. When you come up to the level part, number one, everyone on this side is what we call is the view side of the project. And it was obvious when you looked at how these houses were put, one-story, two-story, whatever, that the developer was trying to give as many views possible to the people and not encroach on each other. You notice some of the smallest lots are actually where I am, 1, 2, 3, they're three in a row. And these happen to be three single-story homes. There's no two-story homes there. Again, if I was, if I tried to build a two-story here, I'd be encroaching on each neighbor. Two-story home here, great views. One-story home here, I think it was very obvious it was built so that it would still give this house here, our, the appellant, appealing or, I'm a dentist, so don't get me on all these things. Anyway, so that that house could have a view, and of course, this is a one-story house has a great view. And again, back to this two-story house, it's sitting on the, sort of, the non-view side of the street. This is the last house, I'd say, on the non-view side of the street that gets a view. So over here, their second story maybe has a view straight out, although now that I think of it, they don't have any windows on the second story facing out this way. All the windows face back towards the hill. That's just giving you that explanation. So anyway, another two, actually, this was a one-story, and they did a two-story addition here, which is right across the street from us, which actually gave them a view over our house to look out through the canyon once they put a second story on it. And again, it just, I feel bad that, you know, this guy's basically going to lose his view. He's going to, property value is going to go down. You know, he bought the house looking at the view, and I think this, if this wasn't planned well, it's basically, let's just stick it straight up and go for it. We've got a very small level pad out here, but again, you could, you could do a lot more with this and still get your 4,000 square feet. I don't care about the square footage, but, you know, why don't you design it right so that you don't impose on your neighbor? That's all. I think it could be designed a lot of different ways. And come out a little bit out towards the slope. Would it be more expensive? Sure, it'd be more expensive, but, you know, if you're going to put 4,000 square feet, it sounds like money is no object, so that's all I got to say.
Thank you. All right. Mike O'Hill.
Mayor, council members, I wasn't going to speak on this subject matter tonight, but as things went on, I started thinking about the words called mansionization, and it comes up every council season. I don't get it. The people who already have their homes in the canyons like what they already have, and then someone, a new person moves in the neighborhood and wants to change what they have, that affects all their neighbors. The Marconians, pardon their name not being pronounced correctly, have a ranch-style house. My house is ranch. I know what modern is. It's not the same. Then you go ahead and put a house up that's not only going to block the view, this man's going to have a wall in front of his house. This proposed new house does not relate to the existing neighborhood, blocks the view, lighting, side lights. Of course, no big deal, just go ahead and reduce the man's value of his home for the benefit of the remodeled house. Mr. Larry Barnes said it correctly. Planning and DRB don't work together. I thought we've already come to that conclusion, they're going to work together. I think the staff should be fired, personally. How can you come to these conclusions with what you showed here? You know how the city people here like, they dislike mansions? And you go ahead and say, it's okay, it goes with the, we'll just massage the numbers, that's all, no big deal, let's just massage the numbers. Let's set some standards, some values. You know, you drive up Glen Oak, excuse me, Chevy Chase Canyon, and yes, you're right, there are no standards up there because you made it that way. Because I remember back in the '50s, the '60s, and the '70s, before we could level a mountain down, everything looked pretty much the same, looked nice. Now Chevy Chase Canyon is one house on top of the other house. I'm glad I don't live up Chevy Chase Canyon. It's almost like, it's hysterica up and down. Do we want to keep that feeling? The planning department needs to do their homework and listen to the public. The public is saying, no more mansionization. Any house that doubles in value, in size, is not compatible with the rest of the neighborhood. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Okay, the applicant can now rebut the testimony of the appellant and the other speakers.
Armin McCurchan, 2064, Buckingham Place. I didn't know that we are planning to build a mansion, honestly, and everybody here, I mean, the appellant was talking about mansionization and that we will build a mansion. I think they didn't see just the real mansion, what it is, so. They were just saying about 5,000 square feet, which is not right. It is now, it is now 3,900 after we just reduced that 200 square feet, so it is now 3,900 square feet. About the modern style, there's a house in the corner of Linda Vista and Buckingham Road, just close to us, there's a modern-style house, which is, I believe, should be around 4,000 as well. We are, actually, we bought the house six years ago, and we were just waiting right time to build it. And I was always mentioning that to my neighbor, that I have, I have actually plans to do the second story, so he were, he was aware of that, so. And by the way, most of the houses surrounding us, two-story houses. I mean, and I don't understand why we should live in a one-story, and we were like, six people living in the house, and I'm living with my mother-in-law as well, like our president, We don't have enough space, actually, that's, to live in a right way. About lighting and sunlight, they need, if you look at their house, when the sun is going to their windows, it's always closed, blinds always closed. I don't understand why, why they're complaining now, that because it's direct sunlight to their window, they cannot open, so. I think that's it. I mean, we were thinking to do something, something good here for us, for neighbors and for city, but in this hearing, my understanding, we're doing something bad, very bad, so if you think so, I'm going to stop this project. What can I say? But we really need to expand this, and this is the only way we can do, so. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now the appellant gets to rebut the applicant and any other speakers.
Thank you, Mr. Contur. Few notes I took here, and I'd like to say that windows closed from the direct sunlight is not, is not an argument. Don't bring it here. Talking about not sun ray maybe going straight, but sunlight, those are two different things. Don't play with words. Now, I want to go back to one case which Villas Zemaitis, as a case planner, forgot to mention. And again, a gentleman before me, he said board and case planners don't work together, and that was, that was exactly right. Villia did not mention that Mr. Ellis was against it, first time. Will you please remind us about that? Mr. Ellis was against it first time. On the second motion, you convinced him to do it. I mean, board members convinced him to do it. That's, please, please come back to this. I ask for it. Yeah, let me just finish. About the square footage, this is the table is taken from DRB. Everything is 2,000. There are no 4,000 houses, 4,000 square-foot houses in this neighborhood. Nobody's depriving you from doing this, 4,000, but there is a way to do it. Number one, I don't, if you may notice this, I'm still confused, and that's I learned not long ago. I did not even know, being neighbors, I lived there for about 11 years, this neighbor lives six years, we're in good relations, we're very in good relations, no problem there, but I thought he's the owner. Apparently, he's not. If you look at the case, it says Gework Nersisian. I was trying to find Gework Nersisian here, I couldn't find it. I couldn't find him. I don't know where this guy lives. Is there a power of attorney? Who speaks on his behalf? Is his signature there on the case? Who is asking for remodeling? Who is asking? Gework Nersisian is the owner. That's on deed. That's on the deed. Who's signature is on the case? What are we doing here? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If there are any questions, I would be happy to answer.
Okay. Well, that's an, okay, you can have a seat.
Thank you.
That's an interesting question. Does the owner...
Who is he?
The applicant is the architect, but the owner of the property is who?
Correct. Bring your mic. The applicant is Albert Zargarian. That would be the architect on record. The property owner is Mr. Nersisian. I believe Mr. Armin is his nephew, and in terms of the presentation before Design Review Board, Armin was actually making, well, essentially, in terms of translation, was explaining it for the architect. That is why the architect on record, the applicant on record, is not speaking today, nor did he speak at the Design Review Board meeting.
Right, the applicant, but in terms of the owner of the property, so this gentleman that spoke tonight is not the owner of the property...
No, he is not.
The what? The nephew of the owner?
Correct.
Was he a tenant? Is he a tenant in there? I mean, he says he's living there.
He's a tenant. He lives on the property, correct.
Tenants have standing to...
He can, absolutely has a right to represent the owner, and I believe, Villia, that the owner signed the application, is listed on the report as the owner, correct?
Correct.
Mr. Nersisian?
Correct.
Okay, so that's, as long as the owner signs the application, anybody can represent the applicant and/or the owner at the hearings.
But usually, they come and say, I'm representing the owner.
Yeah, I...
I know, that's...
So, that's my point.
That's an offense.
Ms. Freeman.
So their new, the revised plans, they're 3,900 square feet now?
To give you an exact calculation, the overall square footage, as proposed, is 3,970.
So that's quite a bit of difference from what we saw before. All right, I'm going to go through a whole bunch of the issues and then give you my decision. This is going to take a minute. First of all, in terms of, just overall, I'm going to say, I don't think that this case is quite as clear-cut as people seem to say, especially when you're talking about a 3,900-square-foot house, which is not really a huge house, especially on a 30,000-square-foot lot. I don't think that these people are out to disrupt and destroy the neighborhood. I think that they are honestly doing what they think that will improve their property. So I don't want people to leave here on either side mad at neighbors, thinking that people are trying to destroy their quality of life. I think everyone here is trying to do what they think is best for their property and for the neighborhood. About the process discussion about the influence of planning over the design review boards, having been a design review board member for five years and having tried to influence my fellow board members, they're not that easy to influence, believe me. If they really felt that something was wrong with a staff report, I have seen many times where they were the first ones to say that they disagreed with staff and they disagreed with the report. So I don't think that it's a bunch of sheep up there that are easily let around. I'm sure that they came to their own decision. This is a case where having a model or some types of different elevations, I think, would have been really helpful, and we may want to look into making that a submission requirement for these types of projects. We're all here trying to kind of guess, except for the people who live there, exactly how these houses all fit together. We have a situation that's hilly. We've got slopes going in different directions, and different slopes are shown on different elevations, so it's really hard to see how these all fit together. But one thing is clear about this area and many others like it around the city, which is that they were built, as somebody said, they were built a certain way and fit in a certain way, and the site planning was clearly important when they were built. And I think that, and this is sort of an aside from this case, that we need to look at a way of incorporating those sorts of conditions into our existing guidelines or coming up with an ordinance that addresses that so that this doesn't keep happening over and over again. And we see a lot of areas that step down, and someone wants to do a second floor, which is within the zoning, but it affects everybody. And we need to, there should be a way, I would think, to address that condition and to make that part of our design requirements so that everybody, including property owners, understand that going into the process. Without having a model, it's very hard to know how all of these houses affect each I have sympathy for people that are losing a view they've come to expect. I'm not convinced that everybody on this street has a view. And one of the problems with view in general is who kind of deserves it? I mean, if your house, if the existing house of the appellant is blocking the one-story house next to them, does that mean that your second floor should never have been built or should go away, or maybe they should be able to do three stories? I don't know. So it's something that we need to maybe get into at some point, but it's not something that, given that they're only going up nine feet, I'm going to take into consideration here, because I don't know what the views are from the rest of your house, I don't know what theirs are, I don't think anybody here knows. In terms of the look of it, I also don't believe that houses should necessarily be hidden. I don't find it very compelling to say, oh, this house is visible from Chevy Chase. Well, so what? Some of our best houses in Glendale are visible from various locations, so I don't find that compelling. About the discussion about modern and ranch, ranch houses are a type of modern architecture. I mean, they were, then they, you know, so it's not about, ranch is not modern or modern is not ranch, that's not important. But what is important to me in terms of compatibility is not so much what you call it. And I think a very contemporary house can fit in well with a ranch, a mid-century modern fits in well with a ranch. But one thing about the ranch style that is kind of its main criteria, its main, what do you call it? Character, thank you. I knew it was a C-word, is that it always accentuates horizontal lines. And what I find troubling about this house is that it's very much accentuated on vertical masses. And that's what's been throwing me when I look at it, and I was trying to put my finger on why this house, to me, doesn't seem like it's compatible design-wise. It's not the style so much, it's that you have a lot of vertical elements. And that troubles me because I think that's, I think that that might be what's throwing people. And when you look at it and you say, this isn't fitting in, it's because everything is this, 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 horizontal, 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 and then all of a sudden, you have something that's very up and down. And that, to me, is a problem. And that's, that's one of the reasons why I'm leaning towards supporting the appellant. And I find, and for me, that's very difficult to do because I tend to feel that unless our boards make a procedural mistake, I have a lot of faith in our two design review boards, and I don't like to overturn any decision of any board, particularly two design review boards that I have a lot of faith in. But that is troubling me. I feel that it's not so much the style, it's not that it's contemporary, it's not that it's modern, it's that it's very vertical. And it's really accentuating the verticalness of it in its design. Now, I was, I did have a note about the size, but now that it's gone down to 3,900, you know, that's not a mansion. 3,900's... 3,900 square feet is pretty much sort of what's accepted these days. And given that they have a 30,000-square-foot pad, it's hard to talk about that. But what I will say is that the pad... The way that the house is laid out on its lot, it's a sighting issue. You have a house now that is clustered amongst a bunch of other houses that are much smaller. And so if this house was in the middle of that lot, I mean, I understand there's a slope, but if it was somewhere else in the lot, the size would be fine. But given that it's right up in this little cluster on this cul-de-sac with all of these other houses, that's where the size becomes a problem. So it's not so much an FAR problem. It's not even a square-foot comparison, and I want to make that clear because I think we have to be careful about saying that, "Well, we're going to take one number and not the other. We're going to only look at square footage, and we're not going to look at FAR, or we're only going to look at FAR and not square footage." I think you need to look at kind of the whole picture. And the way this house is sighted is that it's really clustered amongst all these other houses. And I do think that it's going to really look like something that fell from another planet into this little cluster of ranch houses. So this house at this size with a different design, I think, could have worked. So I'm not saying that it's the 3,900 necessarily, but the 3,900, the way that it's sighted, the fact that it's not sort of using that downslope and going down the slope, which would have, I think, made everybody's concerns go away, those are the reasons that I would side with the appellant. It's not the view issue, and I want to be clear about that because I don't think that going up nine feet, you're not blocking a whole window. You're moving something from here to here. You still have the rest. That, to me, is not a convincing enough argument. But when I look at this design, this very vertical design, and this little cluster of very close, very horizontal ranch houses, I have to say that if I had been on that original board, I think I would have voted to return it for redesign. And so I am going to... I will very reluctantly, because I hate to do it, but I will vote to overturn the Design Review Board's decision on this one.
Mr. Drayman.
Well, let me cut to the chase. I have no such reservations.
Okay.
The Design Review Board plays a very important function for this city, an extension of what makes a neighborhood, neighborhood compatibility, and an extension of a subjective process that we try to quantify in some way. That's difficult to do. However, when it comes on appeal, the responsibility rests with the City Council. And we're the ones that have to answer to the community because we're the elected officials for the community. So I have no such reservation. My experience, and I've spoken before, Design Review many times over the years. I never had the opportunity to speak before your DRB, Councilmember Friedman, but before coming to this council many times. And I think very often they get it right, and occasionally, they don't. And in this case, I think they didn't. And I think it's part of it is not anything wrong with the process so much as it is... Or the process as laid out as much as the process as it evolves sometimes. Sometimes, things don't fit into neat little categories, and I think this is one of those projects. I think my colleague is correct when she is describing the style of the project. I don't believe that in... And I've said this many times, although I have a pretty good record of dealing with neighborhood compatibility issues, at least I think I do. However, I... There's a difference between neighborhood compatibility and neighborhood conformity. There's a big difference. So it doesn't bother me that the style is different. What does bother me, though, is a house of any style that, in my view, is a bad design is just that, a bad design. This design, to my eye, is extremely boxy. And again, this is subjective, but I'm the one that happens to be sitting in this seat. I have to cast a vote. It's a very boxy design. It is... I mean, if I had to pick a design, I wouldn't pick modern. I'd pick something called chutes and ladders. To me, it's a vertical design with lots of slides all over the top of it. It bothers me, plopped down in this neighborhood. To say that it isn't visible is also ridiculous. It is visible. I've been up to the site, and it is visible. Also, as a side note, but this is not part of my decision-making, but I want to make the comment, although view specifically isn't a... One of the findings, I just have to comment on the fact that this is not a slight intrusion on the view. This is a major intrusion on the view. But that's not... I don't even need to go there because in terms of the mass and scale, that is... That's enough for me. But I'll throw in two other items. One has to do... One also relates to findings, and the other does not. In terms of a modest redesign, whether you call this 3,970... What was it? 3,900 square feet and change, what?
3,970.
3,970. To me, that's 4,000 square feet. I'm not interested in rounding down when it's an issue of neighborhood compatibility. It's 4,000 square feet. The neighborhood average is 22... Around 2,200. So whether it's, you know, 4,000 feet versus 2,200 feet, or... So whether it's a difference of 2,000 square feet or 1,800 square feet, to me, that's not modest. That's not a modest increase in size. To me, it's not even a matter of a second story. I don't have a problem with that. What I do have a problem with is a second-story design that is so intrusive in this case. So I will be voting to support the appellant on this. And the only other comment I want to make is it really troubles me when I hear landscaping trotted out as a mitigating feature. It is not a mitigating feature. Putting up... First of all, using landscaping that you put in as a means of moderating or mitigating the impact of a design does absolutely nothing to convince me. But this takes it a different step. This is using the landscape that's existing on the appellant's property and saying that mitigates it. Sorry, I'm not going there. Anyway, I thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your time.
Mr. Zargarian.
Well, the first thing I want to comment on is the flaw in the process. And that flaw is this house coming to a DRB consisting of the bare minimum number of commissioners. And in particular, the two commissioners who were absent are the ones with the most history and most seniority on the DRB for many, many years. That's Mr. Insua and Mr. Aliano. So I'm not happy at all that they were not part of this process. The fact that Brian Ellis, who is a non-design professional, had some reservations on this, I could easily see how he was swayed by the other two commissioners, who perhaps are a little more liberal in their interpretations of compatibility and all that. So I don't want to have another appeal come to council unless you've got... I mean, I'm going to say a full complement of the DRB commissioners. It's just too important to think, especially with our new process, where they jump straight to City Council. So I don't know if that's something we can strongly recommend to the person who's organizing and taking attendance. But previously, there was another level here. You had the alternative assessment panel. Then there was a BZA... No, not BZA. It went to the AAP. And then it came to council. So you had, in the old format, you had an opportunity to catch up and maybe recover from any absences. So I'm not happy that it wasn't fully vetted. And I don't know how they would have voted on it, but certainly, it would have given me a little bit more to go on, whether they were either for this or against it. They could have changed it. They could have supported it with some different recommendations for redesign. So especially when you've got the senior members there. I mean, I think that's important. Those two gentlemen had... And I don't agree with them all the time. Oftentimes, I disagree, but their opinion is certainly valuable to me, perhaps to the rest of the council as well, when we listen and hear their comments and read their reviews. That being said, it passed that board. I don't find the current design to be compatible with the neighbors. The statement that a modern design, I think in the findings, is a... That they tend to focus on simple, straightforward forms, so the modification from ranch to modern is not a drastic contrast. I can't... I mean, that... I barely got that out. That is really nothing that I can agree with. There are locations for modern homes. I see modern homes fitting in much, much better with a... In a mid-century scheme where you've got the different lines. I think the lines are more compatible in that regard, but certainly not in this neighborhood. I do find the size to be... I mean, I don't want to say mansion, but clearly, it's borderline mansion on its size in relation to the other homes in the neighborhood. When you're looking at... You know, they say, "In the land of the blind, the one-eyed man is king." Well, in the land of 2,000-square-foot homes, the 4,000-square-foot home is a mansion. And I've seen mansions, and there are certainly mansions and mansions, but it's all relative in this regard. You know, I just have to stand up for the appellant. I have to stand up for the neighborhood, for Chevy Chase Canyon. Sometimes, I approve homes in Chevy Chase Canyon, but the design has to be sensitive to the terrain and sensitive to the neighborhood. And I keep going back to Art Simonian's design on his ranch home, and to me, that's the epitome of good design in the Chevy Chase and Hillside area. Even though Art Simonian voted for this, I'm going to give him an excuse on that. It just doesn't work. It doesn't work in this situation. So I will not be approving the design. I'll be supporting the appellant in his challenge of the design.
Okay. Well, let me start by saying, when I looked at my packet and saw the design of the home and thought about... I had a friend that lived on Buckingham Road years ago, and I thought about the street. I remember getting mildly irritated, but then I thought, "Well, Buckingham Place must..." I had never been there before. It must be sort of nearby, and maybe there's some modern-style homes, et cetera. When I drove to the location, I actually drove through Linda Vista, which means you go all the way through... Oh, wait a minute. Is it Linda Vista? No. Rancho...
Rancho San Rafael.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Drove through Rancho San Rafael and then through the estates and then on to there. There were lots of homes that had been redone. They were originally ranch-style neighborhoods, but homes have been redone, and they sort of have different flavors. Second stories have been added on to, but for the most part, it was quite compatible, and not every home was alike, that's for sure. Then, when I started driving through Buckingham Road and on to Buckingham Place, the feeling is completely and utterly rustic. That is the best way to describe those streets and those roads. They're very narrow, winding roads. There wasn't one home... There wasn't one home that even faintly resembled this project. Not one. I drove all the way up. I looked at everything. I drove back down, and then I turned around and went back up again. So I did it twice. There wasn't one home that even faintly resembled this project. So quite frankly, I'm at a loss why we've been here for the past hour, hour and a half, however long it's been, having to make this decision. I thought we had clearly gone in a direction in this city that we wouldn't have to go through this on a regular basis. But here we are again, a home that's twice the size of the neighboring homes. And by the way, we keep talking about it's been reduced to 3,900 or whatever it is. That doesn't include the three-car garage. That's just living space. So there's a lot more square footage that we're talking about here. It's not even close to being compatible to the rest of the neighborhood. And I know that that is subjective, but I've been at it for a long time, and this isn't even close. This, in other locations in Chevy Chase, or that particular design in other locations in Chevy Chase, take St. Andrew's Place, for instance, ranch home, ranch home, super-modern, huge home, and back and forth, and a real eclectic neighborhood. This neighborhood is not. Buckingham Road, Buckingham Place absolutely is not. So we don't want to go down that road. At least, I don't. I don't want to go down that road. They have to come up with a design that's going to be compatible with the neighborhood. Call it whatever you want, but this isn't even close. And Mr. Friedman hit it right on the head. Vertical planes. This is a design that basically just shows you vertical planes and turrets and not at all compatible to the rest of the neighborhood. And no, I don't think that the two absent members, who are the most senior members and both licensed architects, Insua and Aliano, I think, you know, I'm disappointed they didn't get a chance to participate. I think that would have made a lot more sense. So I will be joining the other members of the council in voting for the appellant. And I do think that the applicant could come up with a better design and take into consideration not only the next-door neighbors, but the context of the neighborhood, the context of that cul-de-sac, and do something different with his very substantial addition, his doubling of size. Are there any other comments?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor, if you're ready, at 9:02, reversing the Design Review Board's decision.
Second.
Mayor, if I may? Just one point. In listening to the elevations, I think I heard all of you express some reservation or another about the architectural style of design. I think that that should be incorporated into the motion because it... Just so the record is clear, that you all felt that the architectural style of design was not consistent with the neighborhood. And I know that Councilmember Friedman was a little...
Well, it's just that, you know, when you call it modern, you know, that's not really referring to a whole lot here. I mean, ranch style is a modern style of architecture. So it's not... Well, it is. I mean, ranch style is part of the modern lexicon of architecture. I think we should just leave style aside. I mean, it's, you know... I think that the staff understands the concern from hearing it. It's a question of, you know, it's the contemporary nature of it. That's not referring to any of the existing houses. I think you can do something contemporary that refers to the ranch houses. We've seen successful examples of that around the city. So it's... Hassan, do you feel comfortable with that?
Mr. Drayman had a comment, and then Hassan.
Well, I just wanted to chime in and agree. I made... I hope I made it clear that there were two points on which I was not supporting, that I was supporting the appellant, neither of which have to do with a specific architectural style. One has to do with the bulk and the massing, and the other has to do with the... I'm losing my train of thought here. I'm sorry.
Boxy look.
The other was the modest nature of the remodel, where we're quibbling as to whether 1,800 square feet versus 2,000 square feet represents a modest remodel in a neighborhood where the average square footage is around 2,000 square feet. So anyway, it is not specifically the architectural style. I did mention I don't care for this design. And I also think I said that, Mr. Mayor, that the... I do believe that certain modern designs do complement ranch-style homes. And my view is that it is not meant to be conformity, but compatibility. So there may be modern... So I would not be very comfortable with the idea of inserting here the notion that a modern style, a modern architectural style is the reason for my vote, anyway.
Okay. Well, let me also comment that, on the other hand, I would hate to leave it so open. I'm fine with not adding any extra language, but I hate to see... I'm fine with not adding any extra language, but I hate to see, well, now let's try a Mediterranean, and we're gonna go straight up again with the same site plan, and we're gonna do it all over again, only this time, we're gonna do a Mediterranean. Because I don't think that's appropriate either.
We can certainly...
All I was...I'm sorry. All I was trying to get at is that in terms of the findings that are available to us, I don't think architectural style, picking one or another, is included in the findings, unless I'm...
Let Hassan have a comment. No, and then Ms. Friedman. No, no, you go ahead. Let's hear it with you.
If I may, one of the...what I'm...the broad direction...we actually heard a lot of detailed nuances from the council direction that we can work with. But if you wanted to add a broad set of directions into the motion, if I may, suggest what I heard was a rhythm and pattern of the existing architecture of the neighborhood in relation to the topography and the surrounding and the clustering of the buildings. I think that'll give us something to work with, because I think some of the details that you pointed out address that, and that would still allow us to step away from defining the architectural style and then allow the applicant to work with some architectural style.
And that's exactly what I was gonna say, that we can stay away from a discussion of style and say, we'd like a design that reflects the prevailing nature of the neighborhood in terms of the citing, the mass and scale, the prevailing, you know, design details, all of that kind of thing, which I think will lend itself to some, you know, some creativity, but also something that will, if it follows that definition, fit in.
Okay, that sounds good. Did you have a comment?
I apologize. I didn't try to...I didn't want to open up a can of worms. I was just trying to say that I heard that the council didn't think that this design was compatible, not that modern couldn't work, but that this design wasn't compatible.
This is your fault, Mr. Friedman.
It is, and I take responsibility for that.
Well, exactly. And that's why I talked about the size as not being my primary issue, because I think even if you took this design and took a third of it off, I still think you'd have a lot of the same problems. Because I just think it's a design that's just not reflecting what's there.
That's true. Mr. Drayman.
I have a question for you, Mr. Mayor, and also Mr. Najarian. When we were working on the...we want to call it the reworking of the...we were reforming the whole process, we were talking about language related to compatibility. Did we or did we not hammer home and hammer home and hammer home the notion of...I can't remember the language we used, but special attention to the properties immediately adjacent to the subject property? And part of that was because we were trying to incorporate this idea of not just general compatibility, but specific neighborhood compatibility. We talked about that language, and we asked that be included. And I'm just wondering how that fit into the discussion on this particular project before it came to us.
Yes, you did, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Drayman, you did ask us to pay special attention to the homes, especially the homes immediately to the...to either side of the property and in some occasions across the street. And in terms of how it worked out, we will talk with staff on how to answer that question better. But in some cases, it becomes a little bit more enigmatic. And in this case, we...and unfortunately, I cannot promise to you that we will not come back with appeals, that you will have to define this further. The statement on compatibility was discussed in great detail, and it'll be subject to a lot of debate for the years to come. And unfortunately, some of our direction will become clear in the appeals process. In this case, you've given us a lot more tools to work with in our future staff reports. But I must say, one thing that was raised that I cannot promise we can address is Mr. Najarian's comment that with three DRB members making a decision, the appeals will not come there. That constitutes a quorum unless you direct us to change the ordinance, to change that, and reintroduce a different process. Unfortunately, so long as this process is in place, if we have a quorum and a decision is made and an appeal is filed, we'll have to bring the appeal forward to you.
And I was gonna agree with that, and also add that in some circumstances, you might have permit streamlining act issues where you have a project that has to get...projects have to get approved within a certain timeframe.
Well, oftentimes, the city council, when we are dealing with a weighty issue, even with the absence of one member, we...the chair of the meeting, the mayor, to have it fully, I mean, in terms of doing a full service to the public, delays that and makes sure that the considerations occur at a time when we have a full complement of city council members. And, you know, and that can't be put in an ordinance. I hear what you're saying. A quorum is a quorum, but I think the person running the meeting, either at the time or the person organizing it, should look ahead and confirm attendance to the extent possible.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, yes, we are actually having a study session with the DRBs and then to revisit the process and maybe bring some recommendations to you on changing the process. This is something we could discuss with the Design Review Board, and the chair certainly has that option as it is, but we could emphasize that maybe they could practice that option more often.
So I had a motion, and it was...
Seconded.
It was modified to include the language that you were looking for about the design. Or didn't you...whatever that whole discussion was, I'm not sure where it led, but I'll adopt that in the motion.
My suggestion had been to say that the council didn't feel that this design was compatible with the neighborhood. I'm not sure if the council wants to add that or not, but if you do, that...
Yeah.
Okay, this design, not the particular style, not commenting on the style or the...
Not commenting on modern or anything.
The genre.
Okay, any other comments? Roll call.
For a second.
There was a second. Councilmember Dray...members Drayman...
Yes.
Friedman...
Yes.
Najarian...
Yes.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next, please.
Item 9A is Director of Planning regarding proposed fees for Planning Department. And 9A1 is a motion directing staff to start charging appellants for postage and noticing on appeals. 9A2 is a motion directing staff to start charging applicants for postage and noticing on appeals. And 9A3 is a resolution amending the citywide fee schedule to adopt and incorporate revised planning fees.
Okay, I've got about 45 minutes of questions here. No, not quite. Are there any questions from the...well, actually, let's start with...
You want to open the hearing?
Right, we'll open the hearing, but let's start with the Planning Director.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I'll give you a very brief presentation, which will include one correction to the draft resolution that's before you. The staff...as the staff report says, we are asking direction...we are recommending that we start charging for noticing and postage for appeals. And we have given you two options, that you would either direct us to charge the appellants for those, or we can charge the applicants for those. There are good reasons for both, and there are some not-so-good reasons for both. Or you could opt not to direct us to do that, and which would mean that the Planning Department and the General Fund would continue subsidizing the noticing fees for appeals. And then the proposal includes some increases on a handful of fees that we charge right now by about 25 percent. This is based on our experience with the new process that really shows that we need to work additionally on those types of applications. One thing that is what was accidentally omitted from the staff report and the draft resolution, but was included in the table that was given to you to compare the fees, was that we're proposing to increase the variance, use variance fee from $4,000 to $5,684. That would make that the equal amount to what would be required for a zone change. The reason for that are twofold. One is that oftentimes, for use variances, we have to go through a preliminary exercise to see if a zone change would be the more appropriate case anyways. And then in addition to that, then we need to do use variance. So there's additional work involved. Also, the lower fee for use variances gives an incentive for people to apply for use variance when they should really be properly applying for a zone change in many cases. So we are recommending to make those the same amount. Other than that, really, there is not much else that I could add. So if you'd like to propose a...to introduce the proposed resolution, we recommend that you make the correction on page four to change that fee from $4,000 to $5,684. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple of questions. Okay, planning service, administrative exception, single-family 427, other types of projects, 708. What does that mean, administrative exception?
I'm going to ask Jeff Hamilton, who prepared the staff report, to come and elaborate on the distinctions.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, administrative exception is a discretionary process for dealing with minor requests for relief from parts...certain parts of the code, selected parts of the code. One of the classic examples is a request to add 100 square feet to the...to a house without providing additional parking. So very...fairly minor proposals. We have two different fees, depending on whether they're a single-family project or other types of project. We give a slight break in the fees to single-family projects.
And what is the administrative relocation?
That is the relocation of a building being approved by, I think, the Planning Director. It has never come up in the 14 years I've been here, and I doubt it ever will. But it's on the books just in case.
Okay, and so then all the appeals, the BZA, Historic Preservation, EPB, they're all at 650.
The appeals are still proposed to be at 650. The nuance that we would like your direction on is, should we start charging for postage? And who should we start charging?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, we know that our appeal process is actually costing the city quite a bit more than that. The reason that we are not proposing to raise the appeal fee to recoup more of the cost in the actual fees, that we think that could be a deterrent to people who may be aggrieved by a project and who would otherwise not actually file an appeal. If it's your recommendation to raise that, we could, but at this point, we think we could keep it at the level of it.
Okay, then the DRB, 700 for new or amended applications. So anyone going in front of the DRB starts with $700 fee?
Correct.
And those seeking exceptions from going to the DRB, what fee would they pay?
That's the exemption.
Yeah, there's no proposed change to the fee for the DRB process per se. We are proposing that the DRB exemption fee be increased from $52 to a $120. We think we're subsidizing that process at the counter, and we just need to recoup greater expenses on that.
Okay, parking use permit, $1,124, what is that?
The parking use permit is essentially a type of variance dealing with a proposal to provide required parking off-site but nearby.
And then my last question is the...to begin a historic district overlay zone, the basic fee is $568.
Yes, it's essentially a zone change, but to encourage the adoption and creation of such zones, we're...we've got a discounted fee in place for that.
Okay, those are the only questions I have. Any questions?
Well, I guess the question is about the noticing, appellant or applicant. Why don't we just split it 50-50?
Well, it...I understand the reason that you suggest that, because that would make it more fair. It's a little bit more difficult to collect a fee from two different agents and who are not necessarily on the same side and who are probably opposed to one another. So it's much more clear to charge one. I worked in cities before where the applicants would be charged, but there is a clear direction to charge the appellants. It would pose a practical difficulty, because the appellant oftentimes acts at the absence of the applicant, and then the...we could do it that way, but it might be easier and more simple to just charge one of the sites.
Well, would you suggest the appellant, then, be charged?
Actually, my...our recommendation is to charge the applicant.
The applicant.
The applicant has a vested interest in having the project approved. It's a little bit more difficult to charge the applicant, to pay for the noticing, where, you know, their project is being challenged by somebody else, but they have a greater vested interest to having the project completed and reviewed. And in fact, it's their proposal that's causing the appeal. So there's some...
I could go that way.
Yeah, that's...okay, any other questions? I will need someone to introduce the...
It's a resolution. Two motions and a resolution, so I think if you're...
And I have one speaker card, Mike Mohill. Mr. Mohill, forgot you filled out a speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, let's talk about headline news before we talk about raising fees for the residents of Glendale. Job losses rate of LA County continues to rise. Unemployment is actually 18 percent and not 12 percent, according to Daily News. That means that 12 percent is registered, yes, but the other 8 percent are the people who are working part-time, are given up. So we're looking at actually 18 percent unemployment in the county of Los Angeles. And here we're gonna go ahead and raise a little fee here, a little fee there, a little bit fee there. But that's okay. Unemployment doesn't mean anything, as long as you're working. Factory goes silent. This is Sunday, the 23rd, in El Monte. Why? Because the environmental laws, factories decide to close their doors because EPA rules. They didn't want to pay another $5 million. So they just close their doors and going out of town. July 5th, vacancy offers room for rent. People are leaving, they're renting. You know, you don't need rent control anymore. But the rents, as high as they are, people are self-deporting, either back to overseas or another state where they have to pay the fees like they have in Glendale. Headline news, LA Times, June 16th, budget woes, building drop-off may prolong state hardship. Unemployment will reach 12.1 percent by the end of the year, UCLA economists forecast. Headline news, LA Times, June 14th, the 90s downturn will still hurt. Manufacturing off. It will not recover from the 90s as we have right now, and we're going ahead and fixing the area by the...where Disney is. Hopefully, we'll get some tenants in that area. Headline news, bankruptcy booms. This is LA-timed. See, you got the date on this one. June 28th, personal filing soar as poor economy and mortgage meltdown push more people into relief of the courts. And now you tell me that we need to raise fees for the residents of Glendale? You know, any fee rate is too much. You know, where do you stop? You trying to encourage business in the city of Glendale or discourage it? I'm gonna leave these little pieces of paper with you. Maybe you can...I know you guys are all pretty busy, so I'll just give you some of my clippings that I've acquired over the last couple of months. I'm retired, so I have plenty of time to read two newspapers. You want to pass this on to the council people, to hear what's going on in the economy? 18 percent unemployment. That's...it's not 12, it's 18 percent and counting.
Is that in Glen Oaks Canyon? 18 percent among your contemporary...
Sorry, Mayor, I don't know that figure.
Okay.
But it's a sad state, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
I mean, you know, there's an old expression?
Times on...
If you know a neighbor who's unemployed, it's a recession. But if it affects you personally, it's a depression.
That's right. Thank you for that. All right, we would...
So you're looking for a motion at 9A1?
That's right.
Would the...mine has that higher figure, the 5684.
Exhibit does it, but the resolution doesn't.
Oh, okay.
And I think it's 9A2.
Would the corrected figures referenced by Mr. Hurd?
Second.
Okay, roll call.
I'm sorry.
9A1 and 2?
That's 9A2.
No, I think it was 9A2, because you were...I think you were heading in the direction of charging the applicant for the appeal.
Is 9A2 correct? 9A2?
Correct.
A second by Ms. Friedman. Have a roll call, please.
Councilmembers Drayman, Friedman...
Yes.
Najarian...
Yes.
And Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Would need another...
So you need 9A3 also?
Correct.
That's the resolution?
That's actually the one that should be with the correction.
With the correction. Okay, I'll move 9A3 with the correction.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman...
Yes.
Najarian...
Yes.
And Mayor Quintero.
Yes. That's it. All right, next, please.
And now we'll return to all committees. And now we'll return to oral communications.
All right, two cards for oral communications, Margaret Hammond, followed by Mike MoHill.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, sitting down, plus and less up there, huh? My name is Margaret Hammond, and I have something, a couple things I need to say real quick. National night out, remember everybody, Tuesday, August the 4th, and there are going to be six different locations, and I think it's going to be terrific. We've, in the South Glendale Partners, we've made a lot of contacts, and our contact officer, Blanca, has made some terrific contacts for our group over there in Pacific Park. We're going to have really a terrific event. And now, one of the things that I want to bring up is the funding. Funding was rejected to be used for South Glendale Street. And it says right in the paper how terrible it is, that it's just a really bad street to drive on, I can tell you that, driving on it every day. The officials said that if it isn't taken care of within the next few years, it's going to be a major reconstruction. And instead of that money being used for what it should be, which would be majority, since 39% of the population lives in South Glendale, but that's nothing. That road, South Glendale Avenue, is used, the most used road in Glendale. It's absolutely horrible. I mean, I want to tell you, if you've got false teeth, you need to hold them in with your thumb while you go over those roads, okay, over that road. And I do hope that Forest Lawn has got their caskets well locked, so that we don't have any casualties of people being evicted from the casket. Because when you go over that road, it's enough to jar your car. Actually, I think we ought to be suing the city for damage to our shocks. And it says right here that the improvements should be done, and there's no way they shouldn't. And yet, it was turned around, the one of them said, "Well, it's up to the city to get it done," and they took the $665,000 and gave it to two groups in Glendale that were both more or less private. One of them is a group benefiting from outside of Glendale, who have received many millions of dollars in funds over the past years. And a small, and then another group that benefits a small percentage of residents, instead of the hundreds of thousands of people who have to drive over those roads. Is not that road, Mr. Zern can tell you, the most used one in Glendale, by a huge percentage, on Glendale Avenue, I can tell you that. It's, over the years, it's come, over and over again, it's come up. So I don't know how you get off letting the city, the streets fall to pieces while the money is being given away to groups that it only benefits a small number of people, rather than the majority that should be getting the benefit from. And it says that that was where the money should have been used. Right in here, it says that, that that money should have been used for that kind of work, instead of going to where it's being allotted. And regarding a handicap placard, mine was stolen out of my car, so, which was quite a shock, I couldn't believe it. I was parked in a handicap zone, and I knew it was there, and it was gone when I came back. I guess I had forgot to lock my door, I don't know, I was absolutely amazed that it was gone. Now, you know, on the water and power, the need to cut down on power usage, I mean, meaning electric as well as water. I have not used a dryer for over 25 years. I hang my washing out on clotheslines off my deck, and that's great, but there's some side effects. Consequence, in a big wind, if I haven't remembered to peg down my clothes, sometimes my underwear ends up flying all over the neighborhood, ending up in trees and various housetops. And one time, my cat walked on a sheet as I was shaking it over the railing, and he ended up, she ended up flying up in the air 15 feet, and I thought, "Oh, my God, that's the end of my cat." But anyway, in a couple of minutes, she kept tearing up the stairs, she was a Siamese, screaming her head off at me because of being flown on a trip to the moon. So there are other things that we could cut back on, because after all, electric power is generated by other power. So in turn, in conserving any way we can, and I think it's a great idea. You save on softeners as well, so that's another thing, that there's that much less going into our system, by having them out in the fresh air. Okay, thank you very much.
Mike MoHill?
Mr. Mayor, that explains the UFO sightings in Adam Sill last week.
Mike MoHill, I love to read, folks, as you can tell. Let's talk about water today. LA Times, just the other day, July 6th, Despair Flows in Water Absence, San Joaquin Valley. I don't know if you all read that in LA Times. The dryness, farms are going dry. I thought about Glendale and water conservation since July 2007, Councilman Najarian. Are we going to go ahead and have the fairness of, you know, it seems to me that it's going to be the people, the homeowners, who have landscaping, is going to pay the brunt of this water conservation. What happens to the people who live in the condos and the apartments? What are they going to be doing? Now, those condos and apartments have swimming pools. Why should they have a swimming pool? Why don't we drain it? We can save a lot of money there, a lot of water there. Furthermore, private residence swimming pools would be nice also to drain. Most people don't give a darn, I'm sorry. I was talking with a friend of mine at the gym before I came over, I said, "I'm going to go to the council meeting tonight." He says, "What for?" I said, "I want to talk about water conservation." He says, "Ah, people are going to cheat about it anyway." I says, "Really?" He said, "Yeah, people don't care, they're going to cheat." That bothered me. Because if people are going to cheat, who's going to enforce it, how are we going to enforce it? You know, only 23% of the people, I believe is the number, that voted in the last election. I asked the gentleman, I said, "I don't want to be cocky, so forth," I says, "But do you ever watch GTV6 on channel, the Glendale station?" He says, "No, I don't have time for that." He's a businessman. I says, "Well, you know, I sometimes write newsletters in the Glendale news press. Ever read that?" And "Ah, once in a while." So my question is, where is he getting the information about what's going on in the city? Yeah, every, what, six months, the Glendale flyer comes out in the mail? People are not informed, they don't care, honestly. They're too busy with their own lives to worry about what goes on in the city of Glendale, unless, unless it affects them personally, like the family that was here earlier this evening with their home? That's where they were here tonight. Or the people before that, about the cell towers, okay? But after that, their issue was gone, and guess what? Out of sight, out of mind. How are we going to get more people involved with the city of Glendale? Unless an issue affects them personally, they don't give a darn, because they have their own lives. If we're going to enforce this thing called water conservation, maybe neighborhood services hire some part-time students and have them go knocking door to door and say, "Folks, what are you doing for your part? I don't care about your neighbor, I want to know what you're going to do." Talk about it in the schools. Let the schools get involved, have the kids go back to their parents, say, "Hey, Mom and Dad, what is our family doing about water conservation?" They tell us at school that, you know what, we have to, I don't know, go to the restroom fewer times, something that we have to do at school. What are you going to do, Mom and Dad? Word has to get out. I remember Councilman Dave Weaver, once upon a time, said about the indigenous tree ordinance. He says, "You can pass this law, but to get anybody to know about it, good luck." You pass laws here, and nobody knows about them, it's like a top secret. How are the issues of the city going to be distributed to the people? People don't read the Glendale news press, very few people even read Barry Allen's Vanguard. It really concerns me, okay? So I'll leave this with you folks behind here, mandatory water restrictions in the works, and the article about the farms. Thank you again for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Okay, that ends oral communications.
Oh, I get 30 seconds more. We got 28 seconds. Mr. Mayor, I was going to ask you and Mr. Drayman, are you contemplating for the State Assembly? If so, when are you planning to make your formal announcement? When do you run, when you do run, is the limit of campaign contribution that you can receive, will we be those contributions, okay? If the police union gives you or Mr. Drayman campaign contribution, would that be a conflict of interest when you vote on their contracts? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, that ends...
I'll wait for my answers. Okay, thank you.
That ends oral communications. What's next, please?
There are no written communications, is there, new business?
There is none.
Adjourn it.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned.